I could have everybody's attention for just a minute. We're going to have a special presentation and I'd like to welcome Ms. Coach Lanay Clark come up to the front here. She is our retiring now Pearland High School Lady Oilers softball coach and as she walks on up, just a couple of things and I've got a proclamation for her, but you know, every once in a while in a community like Pearland or any other community around our, our great state and our area, you know, somebody special walks into your community one day and you look up years later and you see the impact that they've had in the community. You see the tremendous impact that they've had with, with, with their team and, and the girls that you've helped raise and mentor and coach and all those good things. And you just really see the impact that somebody makes. Well, Coach Clark is one of those people. One of those people who made a special, special impact in Pearland, Texas. Showed up here 25, 26, 27 years ago. Softball coach and here we are later in the Hall of Fame of coaching in Texas. Okay. And most of that happened right here. That's right. And, and while we're sad to see her retire and move on, I certainly understand if you're going to go out, you go out as a champion in state, at the state tournament. It's a great way to put a exclamation point on a fine career. So I'm going to read this and just an honor to be able to do this tonight. Whereas Coach Lanay Clark came to Pearland High School to become head softball coach in 1998 with her first season in the spring of 1999 where her team posted a 27 and 10 season record with a trip to the playoffs. And whereas that first season began a winning tradition, and that's what she established here. It's an expectation and a tradition that these girls that come up in that program, there's an expectation of what they're going to do on an annual, annual basis. Making Coach Clark a coaching legend, not only at Pearland High School, but across the state of Texas and beyond. Whereas that legacy would translate in becoming the winningest softball coach in Pearland High School history, as well as the winningest softball coach in Texas class 6A history. Reason why she's in the Hall of Fame. Whereas Coach Clark would never suffer a losing season in her 25 years as the head softball coach at Pearland High School, as she accumulated an overall coaching record of 794 wins, 461 losses and eight ties. That included her stint at Houghton High School in Louisiana and Pearland High School. So that was a combined at Pearland High School. Her record was 688, 227 and 5. So think about those numbers. Record at Pearland High School. Whereas Coach Clark, who coached for 35 years, was also the head coach at Sitinary College in Louisiana and Sam Houston State University in Huntsville before coming to Pearland. Whereas Coach Clark guided the lady orders to 10 district titles and has been district runner-up another 10 times. She was here 25 years. So she was one or two, 20 of those 25 years. She has been named District Coach of the Year 10 times and the Texas Girl Coaches Association Coach of the Year in '09, '11, '16, and of course, '23. Whereas during Coach, Coach Clark's tenure, the Pearland Lady Oilers have reached the state tournament on five occasions. '09, '20, '10, '11, '16 and '23. The 2009 and 2016 runs ended both in state runner-up finishes. Pearland captured state titles in 2010. We were 5A then. That's before they created the 6A category. And of course, this year, 2023, 6A state champions. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me, as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim Monday, August the 14th, 2023, as Coach Lanay Clark, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Coach, I'll give you the microphone. A few, a few words to say.
Sure. First of all, I would like to thank the city of Pearland and Kevin Cole and obviously Dr. Davis for being here tonight. Alls I can say is my husband and I were truly blessed 26 years ago when Pearland DSD decided to hire me. So I get tears in my eyes today. It's been a wonderful place for us. The community is awesome and I can't think of any other place that I would rather be but here at Pearland, Texas. So thank you guys.
We enjoyed that. Enjoy your time in retirement. I know you'll always be an Oilers. Once an Oilers, always an Oilers. All right. We'll get started with our meeting here in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. There you go. All right. City, we'll call this city council regular meeting agenda for August the 14th, 2023 at 6:30 PM to order. If you will all please join us as we have an invocation led by Councilmember Cade, followed by the pledges to both of our flags by Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, I pray your mercy and love over everyone here today. We ask you to please keep our police and fire departments safe. We thank you for them as well. Thank you for our city staff and for the residents of our beautiful city. Please bless them all. Heavenly Father, please guide us through this budget process that we're starting. Bless our meeting with unity and vision. I pray that you build in us a deep respect, not only for you, but also for each other. We are able to reveal and fulfill your vision, the good of our city. We ask all of this in your precious name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
To the great state of Texas.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God.
All right. Thank you for that and welcome to, to your city hall and city council meeting as we'll move through this agenda. Roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we have a quorum present as all members are present with the exception of Member Hernandez, who will be absent for the remainder of the evening. He is out of town on a business related meeting. So moving to citizens' comments, were there any citizens' comments to be heard? We had none there. So I'm going to take, ask the council for a point of privilege for just a second. Because of the drought conditions that we are experiencing, I'd like our city manager to give a brief update to the public as well as the council on our water situation, our, our conditions. This is not on, so I want to preface this to all the council, this is not on our agenda. He's going to give a brief update. There's no opportunity for question and answer here. He's just going to give a brief update of the situation there.
So, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I do want to let everyone know that our water system is in good shape and, and we are delivering water as expected and keeping pressures where they should be. But we are seeing that consumption continue to rise and rise to a point where that coupled with seeing main breaks increase and really no break in the weather in the long-term forecast. We made the decision last Thursday to move towards stage one voluntary drought restrictions. So stage one is voluntary, but we ask everyone to comply because then we hope to see, you know, usage moderate a little bit and then we don't have to move into a, a stage where it is no longer voluntary. But what we ask is that people limit their outdoor watering during the day and then we want people basically doing their watering between 7:00 PM at night and 9:00 AM in the water, 9:00 AM in the morning. And then to also limit that to two times per week and that would be on the same days as they have trash service. So voluntary, but monitoring that closely and you know, where we are right now, we were probably looking at if we don't see things moderate sometime within the next week or so, we may consider going to, to stage two. But right now in stage one and monitoring things closely. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Trent. Like I said, had an opportunity with a meeting and a good, good opportunity to get that out for the, for the public consumption. I think you'll see more and more communication around that over the, over the coming week and two weeks as well. So with that, we'll move forward in our agenda. Public hearing number one. Martin, are you presenting?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. If you would put on the table the reason for the public hearing and then move into the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this public hearing number one, this is a request by Verinder Tandon, applicant on behalf of CCAC Sam's Shadow Creek LLC, owner for approval of a conditional use permit to allow auto wash use within the Shadow Creek planned, Shadow Creek Ranch Plan Development District, approximately 1.0521 acres of land. The general location is the southeast quadrant of Business Center Drive and Discovery Bay. So as mentioned, this is a request for a car wash within the Shadow Creek Plan Development. It has a future land use designation of 288 Gateway, which is intended for development with large offices, medical complexes, retail and vertically integrated residential uses. So this is the zoning map where you can see the specific location of the property. As outlined, it's just north of the Sam's Club on, essentially an out parcel. Here you can see a little bit of a zoomed in view. We have a shopping center just to the right and then some undeveloped land on the remaining sides. And yet again, as mentioned, this is all within the 288 Gateway designation and that designation is for, that designation is for areas that are near the 288 corridor and is really supposed to entail a higher quality development with medical and office type of uses. Here we have the auto wash locations. There is, there are two within one mile. One is outside of Pearland's jurisdiction, eight within two miles, three of which are outside of Pearland and then 11 within three miles and four of those are outside of Pearland's jurisdiction. Here we have the proposed site plan. This is generally showing a wraparound driveway where people would turn in, immediately turn left, go through queuing and then go through the tunnel wash towards the right-hand side of the drawing. The applicant has provided some renderings of the site plan or of the proposed development. And then staff's review of the criteria for approval shows that this, the style of development does not meet the 288 Gateway designation, but it is in conformance with the thoroughfare plan and utilities for the area. And on to the conformity with the criteria. Again, as mentioned, the future land use designation is really what is driving the issue here. So this went to Planning and Zoning Commission on July 17th. At that meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend denial of this application. Since the new conditional use permit rules and regulations have been adopted, this is your first conditional use permit under those new rules. So as such, this is, or the Planning and Zoning Commission acts as an advisory and their recommendation is just that. At that, or at this meeting, you can approve the conditional use permit by a simple majority vote by the city council. I've also included the staff recommended conditions. These basically dealt with the gaining, gaining approval through the Shadow Creek Ranch Architectural Review Committee and ensuring that the site renderings and whatever facade details are incorporated and held in substantial conformance and that the applicant provides details on the vacuum stations, ensuring that they're, that they would have substantial CMU wainscoting or some masonry product in order to reduce sound. And then there are a variety of landscape improvements to be made throughout the site in order to provide screening and to additionally infill some areas that were shown as proposed for landscaping on their site plan. And then last, that the vacuum system be enclosed and maintained inside the building within the equipment room to reduce the noise for adjacent property owners. Again, these are all conditions that were written into, presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and have been presented to the applicant, but the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on this case is to deny. With that, Mayor, I'll pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you, Martin. Roman, are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
You're representing the applicant?
I am. I'm pinch hitting. I apologize for my late arrival.
Perfect. Give us your name and address for the record and you can present, present the case.
I will do so. Paul Gromen, 1925, Pearland Parkway and 2116 Kildare, both in Pearland, Texas. I'm representing Mr. Crosswell, who's out of the country. We were a little surprised at the turn down by the commission. Felt like that they didn't have maybe all the information they could have had. This is a very odd site. It was, it's, Mr. Crosswell's developed tens of millions of dollars property along 288. They have very little left. This is a component that's just under an acre. When you, when you redact the right of way, it's by Discovery. It's off of 288. A couple of points that I think are really important. Number one is you can't see it from 288. If you're coming from the Southbound Lanes, it is cut off. It is behind the off ramp. You cannot see it. If you're in front of it, you can't see it because of Sam's Club is there and you can't see it from the south because Sam's Club is there. So it, any kind of beautification or some adversity to car wash or automotive that might be seen on 288 district really shouldn't apply here because it's not visible from 288 at any point. Secondly, it's a very small site, just under an acre. It's very difficult. Again, the road, the road alignment changed over time. That happens. There's nobody blaming fault, placing fault. It's just wound up being a very small site. It's about 33,000 square feet. That leaves you really with two types of usages. Number one, fast food, which it's really too small for fast food. Typically fast food also wants to be on the freeway and have freeway visibility. There's a brand new chicken place next door that's replacing a taco place that didn't make it. And I've known that I've ever seen a taco place in Pearland not make it. So that kind of speaks to the visibility or lack thereof. So you have, really have a choice. Usages are fast food or automotive. This automotive seems to be the better choice because it's small. We've got, we have several residents that are, they're all over a thousand foot away in the multifamily deals that probably would use the services. It's behind Sam's. It's a complimentary usage to what's at, at the location now. One other question came up or point was made that this was, should be medical. This entire block is all commercial retail. It's not medical. There's medical in the area, but not adjacent to this site. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that. We get to question and answer period. We may have some questions further on the site plan and any other thing the council may have. So with that, we're going to open it up to the public. For those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Second call for those wishing to address council in this public hearing by speaking for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we will open it up to city council for your questions, comments and concerns.
So, Mayor, I appreciate this, the applicant coming here today. I reviewed the notes from the P and Z board meeting and I'll tell you, I'm not in favor of this and this is why. I shop quite a bit because I live on that side of town and I don't know if you guys ever been to Sam's. It's already a cluster with traffic with the Sam's gas station on that road. Now, if you go down to Costco, there's a eyeshine which has two wash tunnels. This is only one tunnel. And even on weekends, when you're trying to turn off Business Center Drive to turn into their car wash, the cars are backed up. And lastly, I will tell you this. So if, Josh, if you can pull up, I think this company's called Mint Car Wash. If you can please pull that up. They have a location and I went, just kind of looked at it. It's in Cypress, I believe. And what I was afraid of is the quality of their cover they have over the vacuums, their fiber. I guess they're, they look like a tarp really to me. Yeah. If you go up, I'm sorry, I don't have access to it. Their website doesn't work. So I think is this what people have posted on there. And so in any case, I will tell you, one of the other things I noticed on this applicant's information they sent was the exterior is talking about CMU blocks just being painted. So I don't know if you noticed the, yeah, right there. So if you look at it on this, I guess this is their Cypress location. It is, it looks like stucco, but here in Pearland, they were just going to put CMU blocks and just paint it. And I have a problem with that because what's around there, if you look at their quality of finishes are much higher end. And so at the entrance of our town where we just got done spending $20 million, you're going to stick something like this in the corner. I understand there may not be a lot of use for this in this corner, but end of the day, I think it's a very valuable land and something will come that's more desirable. And I just think, look, I'm not against a car wash. I just think we can find a better location for it than to be at the entrance of our very busy intersection.
Comments? Questions? Comments?
Really quickly. First of all, just watching the coverage, just got back in town for the folks in Hawaii. Please keep those folks in your prayer. They're dealing with a lot of devastation. I think they had close to 100 people. They're still finding. So please keep those folks in prayers. Really quickly, I do, me and a member Patel live relatively close proximity and I'm very familiar with this, this area generally speaking. And so I do have concerns. I want to ask Martin really quickly, going back to the recommendation. The items that you guys laid out were provided for the meeting to the applicant as well as to the P and Z as items that you guys would like to maybe see going in a direction or was this stuff coming out of the meeting?
No. So this was, this was a staff analysis of the site that we have provided additional helpful resources for. And those notes are always provided to the applicants prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So the applicant could have come and made comments on those, those issues. And if I recall correctly, I believe that they said that they did not have any issues with the conditions of approval.
Understood. And then just for clarity, the board, the P and Z voted 06 and the staff is currently not recommending. Is that correct?
The staff is recommending denial, but if you choose to recommend approval, we recommend these conditions and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously for denial.
I can't really add a lot to what member Patel added. I think he's been thoughtful as ribbon out there. I do agree that this area does have a different tenor. It is our commercial corridor. I think it's important that we try to keep consistent with that. I don't see myself being supported knowing where P and Z is and knowing where the staff is at this point. Thank you.
Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, what is this gateway, 288 gateway on the future land use says it's what, medical? Can you pull up that slide?
Lot of medical.
Large office, medical complex, retail, vertically integrated. How, how does that, how do we apply that to this small of a parcel?
So the future land use designation again is our 30,000 foot high view of the property and what we would like to see, what the city has deemed as what they would like to see developed within that corridor. So the 288 Gateway designation really talks about a higher quality. When you, when you dive into the 2015 Conference of Plan, it talks about how the 288 corridor should be a place to celebrate and should be a place of high value and high design and that uses within there that typically have a higher, higher intensity in land uses and higher design are your office complexes and medical places. For smaller out parcels, we would typically see a retail component applied here. Someone that wanted their own site as a single user and to, you know, develop that property with that, with some retail use.
So the only thing that would, would fit with the future land use plan would be a small retail.
Either an office component, a medical, something, a retail, something within that category.
But it's not just that. It has to be, I mean, obviously this is a weird, weird leftover parcel, right? And we see these all over the place. And, and we're not saying that there may be a, another small use that's not technically in the gateway in the, in that, that designation. But the question is, is a car wash at that location on, off 288 as an entryway, is that the right piece? And so it's not that some other small, what may not typically go here still works with what's around it, but the commission just felt that it wasn't a car wash. around it, but the commission just felt that it wasn't a car wash.
Okay, thank you. I, I think with the, if this does move forward, if we incorporate staff's comments, I think the facade and the landscape requirements certainly makes sense and I've consistently don't have too much heartburn with car washes. And what the, the landscaping we've seen around town with kind of the increased landscape buffers y'all require, I think turns, I think the finished product looks very good. That's all I had, Mayor.
Sounds good.
Mayor?
Pro Tim?
Oh, go ahead, Tim. If the, the land is so small and odd shaped that the only thing that would fit would be a car wash, which I'm not, you know, super excited about, or fast food, I mean, I'm not excited about either of those. So if those are the only two things that will technically fit, I don't see anything medical that could fit there.
So right now, we have only seen this proposal. We have not done an analysis to say that other uses cannot fit there. In fact, I would say that other use, other office uses, other retail uses most likely can develop there considering it is an acre of property. With that said, I, you know, fully understand that there are desired uses and there may not be desired price points for the development where they're seeking currently. But right now, with the discussion of should an automotive car wash have this site and be able to be developed with this proposal, the planning and zoning commission is recommending denial and staff has some conditions if the city council should approve.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
No, no worries. Thank you. Martin, when you sit there and say the 288 gateway and you've got, I guess, a higher standard for what you want developed there, when I pull up on Google Maps, the different things that are in the area, right adjacent to it is a strip shopping center. It's got several restaurants in it and a, it's like a barber shop. We go right next to it, there's a Jack in the Box. Next to it is a Panda Express and it comes up with Sam's Club. I can't tell if that's their gas station, it looks like from what the vehicles that are there in line. Then we drop down on the south side of Sam's area that fronts 288. And there's another strip shopping center that's got several restaurants in it as well as healthcare place. Then we go a little bit further and there's a Hooters there. So when we're talking about quality in the corridor, I've got a little bit of a disconnect on what you're trying to accomplish here.
So keep in mind that each of those properties that you've described is within the Shadow Creek Ranch ordinance. Shadow Creek Ranch utilizes the Land Use and Urban Development Code for a lot of its development standards, which are not necessarily the unified development code that has the typical higher standards. Prior city councils have requested that car washes have, and be held to a higher standard of development where they want to see good quality buildings come in with better elevations, enhanced landscaping. And that is what we as staff drive all of the applicants to be able to accommodate, knowing that that is the, a desired outcome.
I mean, I would agree with you on the west side of Discovery Bay. It's a big enough piece of property that is, butts the north side of Sam's as well as the, the south side of Sam's. You know, you, you're just north of Memorial Hermann. I could see that type of a development, but this piece right here is odd. I, I just don't see a lot of uses, especially if you're trying to have a professional building.
Well, I would say it'd be similar to a residential development where you have, you know, seventy-five foot minimum by a hundred, right? And there's a lot that's left end that's forty. You're not going to say, let's put a really small house there. You're going to say, somebody next door should have bought that property, right? I mean, here's a developer who's purposely cut off a parcel that doesn't really meet the requirements for much of what we want as a city to be developed there based on our zoning requirements and come into you and say, hey, we got a small, small parcel. Allow, give us special loans.
I understand that, but what you've got in that corridor right there doesn't meet what you're, what you're talking about.
So do we lower our standards overall or do we try to meet what we, what we're trying to go? We can, I mean, we.
No, but what, what, does a Sam's meet the professional building, high quality that you're looking for?
No, but again, the Sam's was, was built under the PD, which is a different zoning district. So it, it's a, it's a convoluted area, obviously, because you have such a large Shadow Creek development that has its own rules, right? Shadow Creek has its own zoning designations outside of UDC. And so it's hard to compare that to what we've been trying to do with the area next to it. But it's just like we talked about with the Conference of Plan, right? I mean, when you go in and you overlay a new future land use map and you say, how does this change the existing? At some point, you have to say, you know, we know, we understand what's there, but we're trying to move in this direction and we want to get a higher standard of development.
To me, if, if you, that would be an odd piece to have something like that. And I think it would be a nice or compared to what's there, but that's just my opinion.
Member Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I tend to agree with member Coza. I was going to kind of go down that same path, Martin. I, I don't certainly see a higher end building being put in a, what I would call mid-scale type environment, right? So, you know, nothing against Sagemont, but I'm not going to build a million dollar house in Sagemont, right? If I can put it into context, I had an office there for a long time and I know a lot of people, but that's kind of my point, right? This property's been there, it's been vacant. We have someone willing to do, do the work and put in the investment in the property. And it kind of goes back to what member Carbone said. Is, is the owner willing to, you know, abide by the requirements that staff has proposed and, and updating their landscape environment and so on and so forth? Mr. Roman?
Yes, sir. If that's a question.
Right, it is a question. And I was just trying to make sure that y'all were okay with anything that staff came up to make the look and feel of this piece of property better. And, you know, that's really all I have to say about it. I'm not, I'm not too terribly concerned about the construction because the construction is considered fire resistant anyway. So I'm good with that and you can make it look better than a stucco wall anyway. So it'd be rated better. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roman, as far as the conditions that they add here as far as the, what the development department was looking for, do you have any issues with any of the conditions?
No, sir, we didn't get any pushback on that. And again, I'm sorry, I'm the pinch hitter, so I may be a little in translation, but Crosswell Properties did virtually all the commercial in that area and they've never had a problem yet meeting the, the standards. And those are the same buildings that you can see from 288, unlike this, that you cannot see from 288. So when we talk about the corridor overlay and the corridor, view corridor, I think those have, he's already proven that he'll do the quality that, that suffices. I had a couple of things come up from, from the comments and just want to be clear, clear on. I understand Mr. Patel's, I, I see car washes busy, busy, busy. You know, that's a matter of how you handle traffic. I think, I think that's simply don't line up in the, in the traffic lanes. It also demonstrates that there's demand in the area. If you've got, if you've got a car wash that's lined up, two bays out there, out in the street, you must need another car wash. The other thing that I wanted to mention this, that's part of this puzzle here is the road alignment changed a little bit when that, from the original plat. And again, there's no blaming anybody. That, that happens, the, so the, the off ramps a little different. It came in with Discovery, that little, that little trickle of a road that, that cut the parcel down. So things, you know, things change when you're doing construction. And then finally, I was going to say this, when you get to be my age, you go to the doctor a lot. You're not going to the doctor behind Sam's. That just is not happening. I mean, I, I, I bet I've been to, between my wife and I, I bet I've been to ten doctors this year. They're all in medical buildings that are surrounded by the medical buildings or they're in really nice strip centers. They're not behind the chicken place, behind the Sam's.
Member Kamkar?
Yes, can we go back? I have a question. The, the P and Z voted zero six on this. Why is this in this matter advisory as opposed to, I think in other scenarios, Darren, correct me, but if there's a decisive vote that fails at P and Z, they need a six or seven or a super majority or something?
Yes, because after we changed our process for doing conditional use permits, at that time, we treat them just as that. They're, they're permits. They are not zoning. And so if it's a zoning case and the recommendation is a negative recommendation from the planning zoning commission, it would take a super majority of the council to overturn that negative recommendation. And that's because it's a zoning case. This is not zoning. This is just a permit.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, prior to changing that back, if you'll recall, for the public, planning and zoning basically gave us their thoughts on it, but without a, even if they did take a vote, it wasn't a recorded vote, certainly not binding. And so we had members of the planning and zoning and in fact, one of our new members of council from a year ago came off of that planning and zoning commission that said they, you know, they really would like to have their voice at least on these. And they get the fact that it might not be a super majority going to council if they deny something, but at least they're on record with what their, with what their vote is. So we changed that three months ago, I guess, officially, something like that?
Just about.
About that? So this is the first CUP that's come through the process with the new actual voting with a record vote, if you will, from planning. Any other questions, comments from council?
One more, one more thing, Mayor. Sorry, I know you're in a hurry. Martin, real quick, if I'm reading the notes correctly, P and Z was really only concerned about the, the type of business, not necessarily many of the other aspects of the business, right? Based on these comments, I'm saying that it's just not the right use for that spot, that kind of thing. One person said traffic. So we're going to do a traffic study at some point?
So during the permitting process, they'll work through the traffic worksheet and any recommendations that come out of that, they'll have to make changes and abide by those. Going back to your original statement on the comments, the planning and zoning commission really concentrated on the use before they concentrated on the recommendations. So that's why there wasn't a whole lot of conversation about, you know, amending the proposed landscaping that was discussed and proposed. Real and truly, they were just concentrated on is an automotive car wash an appropriate use for this location? And that's where they walked away with a zero to six vote.
I got you, thank you. There was, sorry, Mayor. There was something about parking. They said they were wanting to use the parking, that the vacuum places were going to be as counted as, am I remembering that correctly? Like they were having an issue with parking?
So oftentimes with car washes, we allow the vacuum stations to count as parking spaces for their minimum requirements, simply because the automo, the automobile is going to go through the tunnel car wash before it hits the vacuum station or enters into the vacuum station.
And Mr. Roman, real quick, on one of their buildings, I guess they have two locations currently, it said pet wash. Is this going to be a pet wash also?
No, sir, not that I know of. I mean, I can't imagine that. You want to make that restriction? I've never heard that. And again, that goes back to the question about the painted block versus the, the brick. They're going to, they're going to conform with whatever building standard you have, including the ones that were proposed. There weren't, it wasn't any pushback.
Any other follow-up comments?
Hey, Darren, as far as the restrictions or the
Conditions?
Conditions that they listed here, do we need to have a motion for that if it was to pass?
As we get to the next item and it's introduced, that can be one in two ways. Depends on probably who's making that motion because a, a person could make the motion to include those conditions because it's going to be, it's a motion to approve to get it on there for discussion. And so you could include that as part of that. Or if it's, it may be a person who's making that motion who doesn't, may not support it at all, may not include those. But I would recommend if, if, if it looks like that there's a chance it's going to get approved, then I would recommend that that motion be made at that time or it can be amended accordingly.
Thank you. I would, when we get to new business item number one, I would suggest putting these on the table. I, I think even those who might be against it, if it were to pass, they would still want these conditions to be at a minimum to be a part of it. So I don't see any other questions, comments from council, follow-up comments from staff, Seeing none, then we're going to close this public hearing, move to new business item number one. Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table? If you feel inclined, you want to include these, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2023-CUP 23-12, including the staff recommended changes. So moved?
We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report as well as questions, comments from council. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye.
Motion passes, supported three.
With that, we'll move to consent agenda. I have items C and D to be removed. Are there any other items to be removed? All right, seeing none, Mr. Kamkar, would you present the consent agenda, items A through N with the exceptions of C and D?
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action of the consent agenda with the exception of items C and D, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, new business items continued. Item number two, Mr. Coza, would you present item number two?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2023-187, so moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an engineering design contract for the Veterans Road Drainage Improvement Project. And this is the first project that we will be starting that comes from our 2023 bond program. When that passed this past May, we then followed that up with intent to reimburse to get some of the early projects started. So this will be the first project we start out of that bond program. So this takes the drainage infrastructure that was built along Walnut Street and, and then started down south on, on Veterans that was built back in 2011. And it actually extends that system south all the way along Veterans to its downfall at Mary's Creek. And what this project does is it allows for completing the planned drainage, drainage improvements in the southwest quadrant of Old Town that was also included in the bond program. And it also accommodates for the future expansion of Veterans Road to a four-lane facility in the future. So the recommend, recommendation tonight is to award a contract to gauge engineering for the engineering design services in the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, open it up to questions, comments from council. Kamkar?
Take a second here, spike the ball. I want to thank the council. We've, first project out the chute, it's taken us two or three years. We had to pass a bond issue and then there was a interim committee, a lot of people across the city. Mayor was on it. Mayor Pro Tim Carbone at the time was on it, I was on it. And this was one of the projects we thought was worthy and and one of the big items is going to have real impact on folks existing, as well as help us be more resilient for the future. Just want to thank the team for getting this going and expedited so we can get this started. So thank you, guys, the staff. Thank you to the city and the council for making this a priority.
Good deal. Yeah, it's the first of the 2023 bond program to roll out in engineering design, so glad to see some of these projects moving forward. Any other questions, comments?
So I'm still new at this. The cost is around $600,000, some $1,000 for 3,700 square, or 3,700 linear feet of road design or drainage design?
So it's for the drainage design for what a portion, you know, part of what the infrastructure is, is building the box culverts along Veterans to Mary's Creek. You know, the scope of the contract is going to also include your ad services, where we're doing geotechnical work, survey work, those types of things, as well as the basic design services, and then also the construction phase services and bid phase services. So it's everything we'll need to get the design put together and to have the engineer part of the project all the way through construction.
And that's not including the road construction? That's just the drainage?
This, that's correct. This is a drainage project. It designs the drainage infrastructure associated with this project that accommodates a future road project, as well as completes this drainage infrastructure that allows us to do the drainage project in the southwest quadrant of Old Town.
So I guess it is 3,700 linear feet, right? That they're designing? Less than a mile?
I mean, they're designing the entire project. So that's the portion that is the box culverts, and it includes the outfalls, the detailed designs, and the drainage studies that go along with putting all that together.
So Trent, how do you guys decide? Because it's not the lowest bidder, right? Like walk me through this process, because this is new to me. So explain, how did you guys pick this engineering firm to do this bid? Or I guess you picked him?
So under state law, we use a qualification-based selection process. So engineers and other professional services are selected based on their qualifications. And so we go through a process where they submit their qualifications, they're reviewed against the scope and the parameters of the project to determine if they have the, you know, which firm is the most competent to do that based on who they've assigned to the project, their past projects and their past successes. And so they're evaluated. Once we arrive at, a committee usually does this, once that committee arrives at the most qualified firm, state law dictates that you then negotiate a contract with that firm, and you, until you arrive at a satisfactory contract between the city and the firm. If you cannot arrive at an agreement, you end those negotiations and you move to the next most qualified firm, and you negotiate down the line until you actually complete negotiations with a firm. So as we work through those actual negotiations, we're using cost curves, past projects, the actual scope of the project to analyze the cost of the services they're proposing to determine if those are in line with industry standards and the scope of the project. So that's the process we go through to arrive at the actual cost for these services.
So on your report, I didn't see any, I guess normally you give us, tell us, you know, how many people bid on this job or how many people you interviewed? Or do we get that report?
So for this in particular, since this was part of the 2023 bond program, we went through a selection process back when we started doing the preliminary engineering reports for that, those bond projects. And as typically been the fashion here is when we go through preliminary engineering, if a firm performs well, as long as they, you know, don't have any issues during the preliminary work, we move them into the final design work. Because they're familiar with the project, they've got the basis of design, they already are familiar with the project and are able to move forward with it the most cost-effectively, versus going back out for a full-blown request for qualifications and selecting a different firm. So they were selected back when we selected preliminary engineering firms for the bond package.
So do they give you an estimate on the final drawings? Or is that negotiated afterwards?
Did they give us an estimate when?
When they, I guess you did the primary, and then I guess for this design work, do we know what their budget number will be?
I mean, this is the contract to do that, do the final design. It's what we're approving tonight.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm having a hard time is, you know, we talk about transparency, right? And to me, I'm having a hard time from coming from a private sector to say the scope of work and the cost are just out of mind boggling to me. Like I just don't understand these costs at all, and maybe this is normal in public sector. But how do I, how do I tell a constituent, okay, this is the process, and you can go online and go look at who applied and how much money we've spent on certain engineering firms? Is there a way for us to tell, hey, these engineering firms are the ones that we've used over the years, and this is how much contracts they've done with our city?
So we've got our milestone report that's got every active project ongoing right now that's got the list of engineers and the size, the amounts of their contracts. That would be the first place.
Is that online?
It's, I believe that is online and available. It is.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to elaborate, and the mayor fill in on this. So I just want to talk about the process a little bit. So when this all started, we wanted to do a fee, and then I think upon a later discussion and a lot of wrangling and arm twisting, we went to a bond, and we put Raj, who's one of my favorite staff members, raise your hand up, Raj, so we can see. Raj is one of my favorite staff members. He's Mr. Drainage in this town, and we beat up on him for what, six months?
Yeah.
Real good on just about all these projects. And we pulled it out of the 2018 big packages of 1.8 billion, the Master Drainage Plan. And so we kind of started to carve at it and carve at it, and you refine it. And we got to a point where there's a lot of scrutiny on the staff side on expectations. And if you go look through the packet, you'll go and see the engineering is usually a percentage overall or all spend. The spend here, I want to say, is a high seven-digit number, low 10-digit number. And we've got our contingency baked in. So we've been pounding on this quite a bit. The PER discussion, just for the folks, for education purposes, we didn't authorize PERs until we had a bid process. And then at the PER situation, we evaluated who could do this drainage work. Sometimes there's companies that do drainage and road work. In this case, there's going to be road work in and around as part of this. So those two things go hand in hand. And so we then pounded on Raj some more. And the guys at Gauge, I think some of their principals are former folks at Harris County Flood Control, very experienced in and around drainage. And so I would just want to buck up the staff a little bit. There's been a ton of scrutiny. We didn't do the full-tilt bond package. We did the $120 million one as opposed to the 150 that I really, really wanted. But the mayor, in his wisdom, prevailed upon me, and we needed to find something that we could all live with. And so this was part of that live with package, and so.
Yeah, so, Member Patel, I think, you know, waking up and seeing what these costs are, this is a real realization of cost. And I'll say, as far as the process concerned, I'll make a political statement in that these types of design services by law are prohibited actually bidding them. We are prohibited by law to actually bid the services. Here's the scope, give us your number. That's a legislative act. So when Mr. Efferson says we have to follow how the law requires it, it has to be based on qualifications. The way the law is written that way is technically somebody right out of engineering school, bang their shingle, have the PE, and could go and bid and be a qualified bidder and get it for a low cost, but yet blow the project up down the line. So wisdom by the legislature is they want it based on qualifications, so you have, actually have a team of people who know what they're doing. Having said that, there was a bill introduced this last session to be able to at least give cities, counties the ability to bid if they choose to. And that never made through. My knowledge, it never even got out of committee. So part of these costs, it's part of that, as Member Kamkar said, you know, we assign a cost to these. In your private business, when you go build a hotel, you don't tell anybody your budget. You have a budget in mind. You know, you've done it, you kind of have an idea of cost. You kind of have an idea of budget that gets refined as you have your architect, your engineers, and they refine the cost and they refine the scope. Same thing here. In my private business, I have people come to me and say, okay, I can do this. What's your budget? Why don't you tell me your budget? Why don't you tell me what my budget needs to be? In the public sector, we can't do that. This is all a part of the public process. So when we go through the PER work, as Mr. Efferson said, we had an engineer that puts together the basic scope, and as always, we don't want the engineer to be low bid. Engineer is usually going to be the high bid, and everybody's going to be below it. If the engineer is the low bid, then we really have a problem with the engineers not knowing their cost. And so as mentioned, typically, engineering is a, and Trent can go into, you know, various variables in a chart and table, but they're kind of a, there's a percentage of overall, you know, cost of the project. Percentage of that is going to be your engineering phase services. Like he said, in this particular case, I didn't see a handful of them, but in the actual budget, engineering was about double this cost. So there may be a few other engineering items that would be left in here. But that goes back to, we'll assign a cost, but then we go in and we negotiate who we think has the best qualified to do the work. And I'll say, even road work, even, you know, concrete, the actual construction cost, typically, we can do things cheaper. You can do things cheaper than the government side. I'll say this, Member Kamkar, I think will back me up, because I think you've done it before. If I go do something in a mud district, which is a public, and it's a publicly bid, you know, scenario, we'll end up paying 15 or so percent more. Now, we're going to get it reimbursed, but we'll end up paying 15% more because it's in a mud district, as opposed to me just going and bidding my project and negotiating with my contractor. So the transparency, and I've tried to make this argument with many a people, the transparency that we go through and we should go through in a lot of ways causes us to go up. I know contractors, the first thing they look at before even looking at the bid documents is they go to our website and they find our budget. That's the first thing they look at. What's the budget? Why? Because they know it has to be out there, because it's transparent. And the last thing they're going to do is come in over that. That's going to be their top-end number. So to your point, though, engineering design are kind of on a, is it a sliding scale type of thing, Trent?
Sure, so there's, sure, there's cost curves where, you know, you look at as the, as the cost of the project increases, that your typical percentage of engineering fees versus the cost of the project goes down to a smaller percentage. So we use those to look at things. We used historical projects we've worked on here. And, you know, when we put together the bond packages, we're estimating somewhere between 10% to 12% of any given project is going to be the engineering cost, and that includes a lot of the ad services and things like that. So we, you know, we start there, but then we negotiate each one of them individually to make sure that the proposed fees do fit the scope of the work and the remaining amount of work.
Yeah, so it's an eye, I just, to be honest with you, it's an eye-opener when you see it versus the private.
And we by no means just ask for proposal and accept that. Our team's very well-versed in negotiating those and pushing back and knowing where and how to take a look at those proposals to make sure we're getting those as tight as possible to where we have a good project and a good team moving forward.
Is anybody from Gauge here? Yes, Muhammad Ali? Wrong, okay. Maybe you can shed a little bit of light on how you develop these numbers?
You can go to the, please go to the podium.
Yeah, I apologize, you're going to have to go to the podium.
And Trent, one more thing before he gets there. Can we talk about, on some of these projects, we want to go get the best price, because if we have leftover funds, because it's an authorization, you could use it for something else in that bucket.
You could keep going down the list.
Whether it be parks or drainage, we're incentivized to get the best price.
Sure, so yeah, every project where we, you know, save a dollar here, a dollar there, or many thousands of dollars here and there, that's dollars available at the end of this program that can be applied to additional projects. So we're always working towards spreading the dollars as far as we can.
We're not issuing the debt.
Sir, so we basically.
I guess I wanted to ask you, you know, on a high level, it doesn't have to be very detailed necessarily, but how do you develop these numbers as far as costs associated with that?
We basically look at the drawings.
Hold on, can you state your name and?
Name and address, please. Yeah. Fran Kadu with Gauge Engineering on behalf of Muhammad Ali. So we basically look at the drawings and what we need to develop the set, how many sheets we're going to need to give, for example, the traffic control, drainage design, the drainage models, and the boxes that we're going to need to install. And basically, we see every sheet we need to develop for the set and how many hours we're going to need to develop that. And we ask for proposals from survey, geotech, and all the required professionals to do the work.
So you get multiple proposals from your contractors and whatnot, and you develop an actual proposal to come back to the city?
Absolutely, sir. And we review every proposal to see if it is the project, and we negotiate the prices with the subconsultants.
Right. And Trent, I think the last couple of different times you guys have provided the scoring on the actual firms that you guys have actually looked at. I don't know if, or some, maybe it doesn't apply in this case, but.
Sure, so, I mean, we typically have shared that. The reason we didn't here is this goes back to, this firm was selected when we did preliminary engineering reports for the bond package. So they were selected there. As long as they perform well during that preliminary phase, we typically roll them into the final design phase. So, you know, it would have been going back to that original scoring, but the, really, the choice here and the reason we selected them as the best firm is their performance during preliminary and that they were selected at that point. So we didn't include that this time.
I got you. And do y'all share that data from your contractors with the city? Or is that something y'all just keep to yourselves and provide the best proposal? How does that work?
We submit all the proposals with the main proposal.
Okay, so we see each, so we see the geotech proposal, we see the surveying proposal, we see the environmental engineering proposal. And so we review every one of those, and if we see anything on any individual one that doesn't make sense based on our experience and history and the size of project, we'll question those and get that, you know, right-sized for the project as well.
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Thank you for that. Follow-up questions, Mr. Patel?
I'm sorry. Have you, I'm assuming you've done work here in the city of Pearland before?
Yes, sir.
And have you had any issues in the past with your engineering fees where change orders were issued to us?
Not really. We have a project right now with the city. We're safer off to schools. The project is going well.
Okay. I'm going to tell you, please do not come back, ask for a change order. I'm being very serious. So I expect you guys to honor this price and don't come back and tell me there is a temporary road, something you didn't include, a need to $40,000, $50,000 change order.
Absolutely, sir. We typically evaluate these projects.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Absolutely, sir.
Any other questions, comments? That's a good point. Change orders do eat up, but if we change the scope, not only change to that would be, they don't change something, but we do. We see something out there and we need to change the scope of a project along the way, even for some future project, we need to change something now or something later. That's not them asking for it, that's us asking for it.
That's correct. You know, anything unforeseen. If you get into your environmental and you have to go beyond your normal phase one and normal permitting process, there may be some additional cost, yes.
All right. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potemkosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, Ms. Cade, would you present item three, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2023-188, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, dual seconds. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The city at our, we have 22 facilities, which we utilize janitorial.
Um, the city at our, we have twenty-two facilities, which we utilize janitorial services at those facilities. Um, and we've contracted those services out since about twenty thirteen. Um, this is a new bid this year, um, for these services. We ran out of renewals for the last contracts, so new bids here. Um, and, uh, we're recommending moving forward with our current provider, A and A, um, cleaning services. They've performed very well for over many years. Um, so this contract is for three years with the first year amount of five hundred and eighty-three, one hundred and twenty-seven, uh, thousand dollars and twenty-four cents. Uh, this would also include, uh, two one-year renewal periods, which we would be able to renew as long as they're within the CPI, uh, moving forward. And, um, so with that, we recommend awarding this to A and A.
All right, uh, thank you for the staff report. Opened up for questions, comments for council? Member Patel?
So I just wanted to say, Mona, you do a great job. And most importantly, you're an asset to this community and I'm so happy to support this. Thank you.
Just don't have a change order. Nah, good comments. Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Petem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Sounds good. Moving to item number four, Mr. Barry, would you present that, please?
Will do, Mayor. Uh, consideration and possible action, resolution number R two zero two-three dash one eight-one, so moved.
Second. We have a motion of second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the renewal of our motor fuel contract for gasoline as well as diesel for our fleet and our, our generators. Um, these prices, um, you know, we bid these last year, so this is the first renewal of this contract. And, um, these are bid, uh, based on base, basically a fixed margin above, uh, the prevailing oil price information service pricing index. And so we get what's called the Houston average rate rack, rack rate, um, based on that. And then we pay, uh, a fixed margin above that depending on the delivery mechanism. So another important factor in moving forward in this recommendation with Apache Oil is that they've been a great partner during, uh, multiple emergencies where they've been able to deliver fuel not only to our, um, uh, fuel islands, but if we need it directly to any, any of our generators at our emergency, uh, facilities. They've been able to, uh, deliver throughout multiple weather events over the past nine years. Um, so it is a unit price contract, so we only pay for what we do have delivered. Um, and this is the first renewal. And, uh, so we recommend award Apache Oil Company an estimated amount of a million dollars.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments from council? I made the comment, was we were going through the agenda. Hard to imagine we're at a million dollars of fuel now a year, so, uh, pretty amazing. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Petem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Moving to item number five, Mr. Patel, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, considering possible action, first and only reading of ordinance, uh, number fourteen ninety-seven dash ten.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. So each summer, we meet with our three school districts that actually have school locations within our jurisdiction to review those school zones. We're reviewing those for school start time and end time, the location of the school zones as well as, as the speed. So this, uh, this year, we just have two minor changes. And, and the first one is to add a new Pasadena ISD intermediate school that's located on Hughes Road. So adding that to the ordinance, so we have that school zone in there. And then we're also correcting a, a speed limit that was incorrect on Veterans Drive, um, for Pearland Junior High and Turner High School. So just a tweak to the, uh, ordinance for that. No other changes this year, so we recommend these, uh, amendments to ordinance fourteen ninety-seven. Thank you.
Sounds good. Uh, thank you for the report. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Petem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Moving forward, item number six, uh, Member Carbone, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first and only reading of ordinance two twenty dash fourteen, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The update to ordinance two twenty is to account for some changes made by the Texas Legislature this year. Um, it basically creates multiple ways for our utility customers to request discontinuance of service. Prior to this, um, they had to provide written notice, uh, to the city at City Hall, uh, to, to, to discontinue utility services. So this new legislation allows it to be done by mail, telephone, through a website, or through electronic transmission. So, um, we recommend making this change to meet the new state law.
Electronic transmission being email?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I love the legislative language, right? Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry? Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Petem Kozza?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to item number seven. Mr. Cam Carr, would you present that, please?
Yes, uh, consideration and possible action, resolution two zero two-three dash one eight-two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. As, uh, part of the budget process every year, uh, and to meet state law as well as our charter requirements, we must establish the dates that the budget will be considered and when a public hearing will be held, held on the budget. So this action sets the public hearing for September eleventh, with the budget being considered on the meetings on, uh, September eleventh as well as the September twenty-fifth meeting. So with that, uh, all yours, Mayor.
Yeah, basically, this is just meeting state law requirements, correct? With that-
I think there's a charter requirement we're meeting with this as well.
Any, um, comments, council, from council?
Yep, I, I guess one comment is, um, if you care, we're probably going to talk about it every Monday night, till the twenty-fifth, so just because these are the two doesn't mean I'm not going to beat it up other times.
We get lonely up here, so, you know, you can come visit us, that's fine. All right. Any other questions, comments? We're on item number seven, Mr. Barry. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Petem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Uh, moving forward, item number eight, uh, Mayor Petem, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R two zero two-three dash one eight-three, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, very similar to the last item, um, instead of the budget, this item establishes the public hearing dates for the tax rate. Um, it also has the proposed maximum not to exceed tax rate for, for the publication for that public hearing, um, as well, as well as setting the meetings where the tax rate will be considered for adoption. Um, it's required by state law and, um, what we're doing is we're establishing the not to exceed rate at, um, point six-five-five-four, um, which is the same rate that's in the proposed budget that we discussed this past Saturday. And so it established, and then we established the meetings for the eleventh and the twenty-fifth, um, just like the budget. Uh, the hearing, public hearing date for the tax rate, however, is, is set on the twenty-fifth to meet all the requirements of the state law of when you have to publish and when you have to, to do the public hearing and when you have to adopt. So, um, and much like the, the budget, we will be discussing this, um, most every Monday night between now and, and the twenty-fifth as well, so. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Questions, comments from council? Member Cam Carr?
Mr. Coker, I just want to double check. Is this a perfunctory item? We're not voting on the rate today, are we?
That, you're, you're correct. It is perfunctory. It's, it's just setting the maximum rate. There's no way after tonight and once this is published that the council could go above this number. It can go below. And that will be set at the September twenty-fifth second reading.
So this is for setting a hearing notice that can be posted in the mail?
Or in a newspaper or wherever we're going to post this? Yes, to meet the truth in taxation posting requirements, correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, again, this is state law driven. You got to set a max rate. You can go below it, but you can't go above it after it, it even, I think dictates how many days out you have to do that, which is what we're meeting, so. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Petem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. With that, Ms. Kay, would you present item nine, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash one ninety-eight, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and council member. This is an item that, that was requested by the council. And so, uh, after a recent discussion, and so I, I drafted, uh, back in, uh, believe it was in July. Yes, I sent, uh, draft to council. I received mostly favorable comments, no, no negative comments. And, uh, so it's now being presented to council for consideration. But essentially, it's just to take, um, currently the charter establishes attendance requirements for council meetings, regular council meetings. This is, uh, a provision that would go into the council's rules of order and business, business and rules of order in order to sort of memorialize, um, some standards within that document. You have any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments from council?
Uh, Mr. Coker, I've got a couple of points of information I'd like to get. So how do we deal with irregular meetings, workshops, special meetings? How does that interact with this policy?
Okay. So in this policy, and let me scroll down to the- So if you'll notice, uh, the way the language is written right now, uh, it, the charter only addresses attendance for regular council meetings, and that's not being changed. Okay, so the, those are, those are, uh, meetings that, uh, have to be presented for, uh, have to, have be excused by council. What this does is it sets sort of a, uh, for council to, to communicate with other council members through the city secretary, uh, when you will not attempt, be able to attend any meeting. So the way it's currently drafted, it says, council members unable to attend a council meeting, not just regular, just a council meeting, shall be required to contact the city secretary's office no less than two hours prior to the meeting, stating the reason for such absence. Uh, then the city secretary shall inform the council the reason for the member's absence prior to that council meeting. But it goes on to say that for regular meetings of the council, then an item shall be placed on the agenda for the council to consider excusing the absence. So the only items that would ever be placed on an agenda for excusing an absence would be the regular meetings.
So in theory, the special meetings or the, we can call a reg, a special meeting with seventy-two hours' notice. Is that correct?
Uh, actually, uh, all of our meetings, uh, require a minimum of seventy-two hours' notice, unless it's an emergency meeting.
Yeah, if we had a storm and an emergency, we can call it on a two hours' notice, but those are very rare.
Well, for instances of charter compliance, it's regular meetings.
Yes. Um, now, what would happen, but let's just say a council member, again, I think the, based on the discussion, the intent was for council members just to communicate. So especially for the city secretary's office, we want to make sure we know we're going to have a quorum that night as well. And so the intent was just to establish that line of communication, uh, as far as not complying with the rules, as far as, uh, you know, what happens, uh, if it's a workshop or something and, and no notice is provided, then that, there's different means of, of handling that through a different portion of our council rules.
Another point of information, how many, uh, different items, when you've see, have an excused item or a consent item, how many have you ever seen fail or not be excused? In your time here at the city of Pearland?
Are you talking about for absences? Uh, have, I have never seen one not approved.
How many meetings have you been to? I mean, we're talking like one out of like a thousand, like-
Yeah, well, you just take twenty-seven years at, uh, every other Monday night for twenty-seven years, a, a couple.
Okay, so, and the reason I ask that is, the last line of your language says something to the effect that the city council is going to make a judgment on what is worthy of being excused or unexcused. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that would be consistent with the city charter. Because the, this, the charter is what actually requires the council to consider whether or not to excuse the absence. And the language in here is, is, it says, uh, to consider whether the absence is excused or unexcused. Failure to comply with the notification provisions of this section, except in cases of emergency, may result in an excuse. So it's, it's not a mandatory, it's, it's a discretionary act of the council.
So I, I guess my, my question, I, I pose this more towards the, the council is, do we want, we want to have the idea that we're putting mandatory votes on what is more worthy or less worthy if we're really focused on quorum notification? I mean, it sounds like we're, we need to give Ms. Francis the ability to count, you know, and get her paperwork in order, but, I mean, now we're making it mandatory that somebody gets to get an up or down vote? That's, I'm assuming not a consent item.
No, uh, first of all, that, that mandatory up or down vote or attendance at regular meetings is, that is mandatory per our city charter, then it goes on the next agenda.
Agreed, but is it, you, is this now putting it on a consent item or is it now putting it on a regular, new business item?
We would normally put things like that on consent, and then it's up to a council member to pull that, if they choose to do so.
Is that, I, I don't know what the intent of the council was on, when they wanted this item. Do, do you guys just want this to be a consent item? Do you guys want this to be a, a notification incentive? I mean, what's, what do you guys want to do?
And I'll, I'll address a little bit. I, you know, several council members spoke out and wanted to make sure that we had maybe some, maybe needed to have something in our rules to just kind of address it, even above and beyond the charter. Um, I'll say this, uh, like even tonight, Member Hernandez sent me an email, official email, want to remind you, I think I told you, I'm going to be out of town, yada, yada, yada. He's got to keep Pearland beautiful, uh, convention of some sort that he's got to be a part of, so he's gone on business. Um, and so, uh, just carrying out the professionalism and the business side of the council, just informing the body, hey, I'm not going to be there. Uh, I got work. I'm sick. I'm out of town, I'm on vacation, various things of that nature. Just letting people know, okay, we're going to have somebody missing tonight, um, and, and we'll move on. Um, even earlier today, wasn't within two hours' notice, but Member Barry said, hey, I'm running late. Looks like I might be ten minutes late and, you know. Again, I think that's a professional courtesy, just to let everybody know, hey, I'm running a few minutes late, uh, but I'll be there shortly. Uh, things do happen on a moment's notice. Might have a family emergency, you might have those types of things, but just letting people know, this is where we are. It's not, uh, you know, and, and outside of the regular meetings, meeting like we're in now, we do have workshops. We have a lot of work that actually goes on during workshops. Uh, our C I P workshops, we talk about multi-millions of dollars and it, it's important that council members are at those meetings. The opportunity to get your, your fingerprint and your questions asked and answered, to understand and know more about the projects, um, and help shape the projects. And so those are important, even though they're not regular meetings, as it count against, you know, um, attendance? No, it's only the regular meetings that count, or the charter. But we still have to have a quorum, um, and even, you know, I wasn't here Saturday, I was on vacation, but we had to start the meeting late because we didn't have a quorum for a few minutes. So it's just noting and having, I guess, I, I don't know that we should have rules for proper etiquette and professionalism and letting people know we're not going to be there. But unfortunately, that's, that's what this is asking for, is just, hey, if we're not going to be there, let somebody know. Um, so we're not guessing and wondering, are we going to have a quorum or not, or is somebody going to show up?
And Mayor, I think, I think that really helps me understand where you guys are going with it. Um, I guess my, my question is, is with the, the voting, whether it be a consent item or not, I think the way it's phrased is, you know, uh, whether it's, I guess, worthy of being excused or unexcused. And I guess if we're just trying to impel notification, I think maybe we add line or say something to the effect, you know, assuming proper notification, that item goes on the consent. I just, I don't want to go into a scenario where somebody is late because they're in traffic or they don't attend or they miss a flight, and then one person says, well, somebody's family member is sick. And like, what is worthy of being excused or unexcused as opposed to somebody saying, hey, we're not on the knife's edge of three or four, we're, you're here. as opposed to somebody saying, hey, we're not on the knife's edge of three or four, we're, you're here, and so, I guess that's my, my concern is, there's a notification procedure here, that's not what is being asked, is for us to notify with two hours' notice, we're asking to then force a vote, and I guess that's my, my question is, can we say something not to be reasonably withheld, assuming proper procedure has been put together?
I don't, I think what you, if, if what you're asking is to simply say that, you could put in here that it shall be placed on the consent agenda for the next council meeting, I mean, that's one thing, obviously, council members have the ability to pull an item.
I mean, I, leaving it on consent the way it is, I think is fine, if somebody has heartburn and wants to pull it, they can. And I, I don't think there's anybody on this council that, that has any hesitation pulling something that they want to pull and talk about.
I, I don't...
But, and, and not, you know, using a term, the, the terms like you just referenced are very common in a contract, when you're talking, you know, shall be approved by, you know, you submit something for them as part of a review process, and the, you know, approval not to be unreasonably withheld, and you see those in contracts, but for something like this, where the council has a discretionary vote to be taken, I don't know that that would be appropriate.
The only reason I ask that, Darren, is, we were talking a lot about notice and professionalism around that, I don't, I think those are all good things, but the question is, I don't want to, if somebody has to travel out of the country, I don't want to feel like I'm compelled to vote and one person's more worthy, and then some other member, six months from now, doesn't have a member going out of the country or it's an illness, I don't want to feel, just, I was the first person, I think, a long time, that got my, my absence pulled, and then I had to come and defend that I'm supporting my wife, visiting family, and her great uncle dies. And then I end up coming back to a meeting that I said I wasn't going to come to, and I showed up coming out of the airport directly here, and so, it's just, my, my questioning is, if you want to notice, say you want to notice, I just don't understand the value judgment, I guess, is my curiosity there.
Yeah, I, I, all I did was incorporate what the charter requires, and so, but I'll defer to council if...
My concern in this is, common courtesy is notify somebody, this point blank, whether professional or not, common courtesy. Saturday, I got a, came here, had a meeting at eight thirty, most of these people right here in this chambers right now are here, didn't have quorum. One phone call, except from the mayor to let me know that he wouldn't be here, and that I'd have to run, of the three members, not one phone call. It's common courtesy. We need to be able to conduct our business, I don't know what it costs in our time, but my time's just as valuable because each and every member is sitting at this desk right there. And for me to sit here and wonder, are we going to have a quorum, are we not? I don't get that. That's all I got to say, Mayor.
Member Carbone?
Yeah, and that, the disrespect to the, to the staff that's been working their tail off for the past however many months, and there was more staff than people here Saturday morning, nobody wants to be here on a Saturday morning, we're sitting here twiddling our thumbs, I felt like I needed to get up and give a public apology, I do, we do value the work you do, sorry, we can't show up on time, it's frustrating. I've been up here for ten, eleven years, and yes, we have to have an attendance policy now, that's just frustrating, it goes back to just common courtesy, just, hey, I'm running late, no big deal, hey, I'm not going to be there, I got stuck with wife stuff, it's a quick text, it's an email, it's just common courtesy, and it's sad we've, we're debating this, and it's beyond frustrating.
And I'll, and I'll, I'll say this, back on the absence that got pulled, it got pulled because nobody knew why you were gone. Zero communication.
Actually, there were two that were pulled, Lanny pulled.
Well, he pulled two, I mean, and specifically to that, and I think people kind of knew you were in and out of town, but there was no phone call, no text, no email, not to staff, not to any member of council, not to me, and, and again, it goes back to, the charter actually says, you know, if you miss two regular meetings in a six, a six-month period that are unauthorized, that unauthorized goes to council. We, we have all signed up by the public to go to work, and we're to show up for work, there are extenuating circumstances, and that's why things get excused. We're not trying to, I mean, this is a part-time, part-time deal for all of us, and, and so, things happen in our life, and generally speaking, I mean, I've been involved either on this council, watching this council for thirty years, and I've never seen one not excused, why? Those people have an excuse, they're out of town, they're out of town on business, they're sick, taking care of a family member, whatever, they've got life, and it, and it happens. But if, how do you excuse something when nobody even knows the reason somebody missed, and that's it, not, and I, and I agree with, with, with Member Carbone, it, we shouldn't be debating this, this should just be, normal course of action is, hey, I'm going to be gone, here's why, I'll see you next meeting, that's it. But unfortunately, we've, we've got to do things and put things in our rules, so it, it helps with maintaining quorum and professionalism and those types of things, and so, I mean, I personally like the way it's written, I don't think it's, it doesn't detract or keep away from what we're doing, I don't think it's meant to change what we're doing, if somebody's absent from a regular meeting, just like Member Hernandez is absent tonight, it'll, you know, it'll be on an agenda, and I'll go ahead and say, he's already told me he's going to miss next meeting, the twenty-eighth, he's out of town again on another Keep Pearland Beautiful event, so work-related. Again, we don't ask you to have a hundred percent attendance, just let us know what's going on.
Mayor, I don't, you know, I'm not the one to, you know, being an Indian, we're never on time, so, and I think she can probably attest back there. So, so, you know, to me, I, I do understand this, right, I do value time, especially what happened this Saturday was disappointing, and I think this is just to remind us that be respectful of other people's time, and I, I accept it, I know I have not been here in every meeting, so I apologize, and, and I hope I could do better communicating with everybody, but I do respect everybody's time, so...
To your end, you had, you had trips abroad, scheduled well in advance of the, of the election, and you communicated that even upon being elected, you even communicated it before the election, that if elected, I'm going to miss here and here, and you did, and, and I, I don't think there's an expectation level from anyone on council that you should cancel a family trip because of council. If you choose to do that, that's your choice, I don't think anybody demands that, and so, it's a common courtesy, and you've done that, you, in fact, you emailed that, it's a matter of official record, because it's in the email. So I, I think that's common courtesy, and that's the way it should be done.
Any other questions, comments?
Saturday morning, I was a couple of minutes late, and I didn't call because I didn't even realize I was going to be late at the time, and then I started panicking, I was just trying to get here, I apologize to staff and to all of y'all, it wasn't a matter of disrespect by any means, it just happened. It just happened, I'm not normally late, I'm not Indian or normally late, but just so, just to put that out there, I am sorry.
You're setting yourself, your bar very low, I just want you to know.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, Madam Secretary, we'll call for a vote.
Member Cade?
Aye. I forgot where to vote.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Patim Kosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, moving back to items removed from the consent agenda, Mr. Berry, would you take up item number, item C, as in Charlie, please?
Gladly, Mayor, thank you. Consideration and possible action resolution number R two zero two three dash one eight zero, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, this item is a cost-sharing agreement between the city and the Pearland, Pearland Economic Development Corporation regarding the Hickory Slough Sports Plex Phase Two. So the second phase of the sportsplex is scheduled to start design in this upcoming fiscal year twenty-four, and in that same year, while we're working on the design of the park, we're actually going to be doing the construction of the detention capacity, the detention pond, which the park will be built within, so that'll occur in twenty-four as well, and then we'll follow that with the sportsplex construction in twenty twenty-five. So this agreement with the EDC has the EDC providing seventeen point six million dollars in capital funds for that Phase Two of the Hickory Slough Sports Plex. Once the EDC has provided funds for construction, for constructing a project, they can also expend funds for the operation and maintenance cost of that particular project. So this agreement also includes those operating and maintenance costs, and that is including two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for capital equipment necessary to operate and maintain the park, and then it includes an ongoing eighty-two percent of the park's operating cost, and that's based on the EDC having spent funds, some funds on Phase One of the park, as well as funding all of Phase Two of the park, so we're able to put eighty-two percent of the operating cost on the EDC, since they have spent those capital dollars. So initially, when the park goes into operation, that's going to be about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars annually, and that'll continue as long as, you know, we're operating that park. So the PDC board approved this cost-sharing agreement in July, and now it's before city council for approval.
All right, with that, I think, Member Berry, you, you pulled this from the consent agenda, so I'll give you first stab.
I did, thanks, Mayor, I guess, my question is very simple, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure where the idea of the park project came from, I get it that we're going to get a reimbursement and so on and so forth, you know, but a seventeen million dollar project, you know, that we're going to, that EDC is going to do based on their, their, their budget, and their, their bond money, and their bondability, do you have any idea what the EDC's bondability is?
The total amount they could bond? Yeah. I wouldn't want to guess without...
I'm just wondering, because maybe we can use, use more of their bondability capital.
Sure, so I'm, I'm, I'm sure they have additional capacity beyond this particular project, I don't know how much...
I don't really mean to seem snarky about it, I was just kidding, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I think that, you know, it's a wise use of taxpayer money to utilize funds that are already taxed, and that we have, have in our coffers, so really, what I would like to see is an accounting of EDC dollars, and I saw it in the budget, you know, just a high-level, a high-level view, but I'd really like to, you know, get with Matt one day, and I think I need to set up a time with Matt to do that, but to really go over projects and, and review his spreadsheet, or maybe it's not a spreadsheet anymore, but I really want to understand that a little bit more, because I would prefer to see this project be a drainage project, or something that can go, that can further move our drainage projects along in Old Town site, so that we can better improve, you know, that area, to make it more appealing for newer businesses coming into Pearland.
Sure, so I think, I think on the next item, when we did get into the discussion there, we, we will see some of those drainage projects that the EDC will support. This particular project, you know, what this does is this offsets some operational costs, not only does, does it offset the, the debt service necessary to build the park for the city, but it also offsets a significant amount of operational cost, and so, you know, that's part of how we arrived at the park. The other, the other way we arrived, because a drainage project, if, if we built a seventeen million dollar drainage project with EDC dollars, they could pay to maintain that as well, but as, as we saw last year, when we looked at all the drainage projects and all the drainage infrastructure PDC had built since their inception, that amounted to about thirty-something thousand dollars annually in operating costs, because it, the, the cost to maintain and operate your drainage infrastructure that's going to last fifty years is very low compared to the intensive nature of maintaining and operating a, a park of this nature. So that's one of the reasons this was chosen, because it offset a lot more operational costs for the city. The other reason is, is the way, the, the parameters the EDC has to work within, and, you know, I can lay out in my head, and Darren can correct me if I'm wrong, there's kind of three tiers. One of them is, is in certain areas to make expenditures, they have to show that there is an economic development associated with it, and that it supports or retains primary jobs, that's kind of the, the highest threshold, and then you've got infrastructure projects that the EDC can do, and those, that'd be water, sewer, drainage, roads, those also have to have a nexus to economic development, but they don't have to have that additional threshold of, of primary jobs, and then when you get into the realm of parks, they can basically do parks without any tie to anything, so that, that's how we arrived at this park, or this project to, really, what we were looking to do is, is reduce some of the, the debt capacity or debt necessary from the city, as well as reduce some of the operating cost of the city long-term, and so, that's why this park project fit the bill very, very nicely.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think the reimbursement on that is, is pretty nice, and it could go into our offsetting some long-term debt that we potentially have, or some capital improvements in the form of other, other items that we need to purchase, so are there, did y'all review the list of, of bond projects that we currently have, that we just currently pass, to see if there are any of those drainage projects that would potentially be maybe not as lucrative from a reimbursement standpoint, but, you know, offer those reimbursement, that reimbursement model to, back to the city?
Sure, I don't, we haven't looked at those to this point, but again, I reiterate that that's going to help out on, on the city's bonding side of things, but it really won't return anything of note on the operating side like the park project will.
Good questions, any other questions, comments, Member Kamkar?
I just want to make sure I understand this, this seventeen million dollar project, is this different than the one that was in the bonds?
This is the bond project.
So we're essentially pulling forward that project via the PEDC lending?
We're moving forward with it, I don't know that we're really pulling it forward a whole lot, but we're able to move forward with it right now.
If the PEDC spends seventeen million dollars in bonds against their, their balance sheet, what happens to our bond authorization?
So the bond authorization would still be there, but my expectation would be, we're getting the project built through another mechanism, and that we either would not sell those bonds, you know, or the council would have, you know, some leeway to, to do something else within the parks realm with those, but I think from a staff perspective, we would just recommend that we don't, we, we don't sell that part of the bond program that was approved by the voters, and don't incur that, you know, that impact, I mean, I, I think that's part of why we're doing this, is put the impact of these bonds, you know, have the EDC absorb those, and then the city doesn't have to see that impact our debt service rate.
I would ask Carrie a flip question, you have seventeen million dollars, you want to do with something else then? We really shouldn't do that, because we've told the voters we're going to do this.
You're, you're, you're asking the wrong person.
I, I, here, I, here's the thing, I appreciate the PEDC wanting to use their bonding capacity, it's not Pearland's city bonding capacity, I, we were at a meeting on Saturday, and I have a lot of hot burn that we don't have that RSA with those two groups, and if we let this, this starts down that path, and so I'm, I think there were some other people further down on that side who are not happy that we're giving a sweetheart deal to these guys who showed up the day before the call of projects, and tried to intimidate everybody here into doing that.
Sure, so, so as we committed to Saturday, and we'll provide you some more information as we respond to all the questions and the, and the discussion from Saturday, is that we have existing RSAs, and so, you know, while we can change the rates, we're locked in on those particular RSAs, so we want to take, you know, some time while those run out over the next year, to do a full evaluation of where we need to be, so that as those expire, we're able to move them into rates that, that we think are, are more appropriate. So we'll have plenty of time to, to discuss those while they're in those existing RSAs, and then we'll be able to make the modifications to the, to the charges for, for their using our fields at that point, but, you know, we're, we're fully committed to analyzing that and making sure we're, we're...
Let me ask this...
They're paying their fair share.
Procedure-wise, we go do this cost-sharing agreement, who lets the contract, does the PEDC let the contract for this, or does the city council let the contract for this?
Well, the city council still will, I mean, it's much like some of our other, you know, our other projects we work with the EDC where there's a reimbursement agreement and...
Typically, wouldn't it be dual, I mean, their board and our, and our council?
I, I think the, you know, this agreement is, you know, a cost-sharing agreement, so...
The actual bond, but the actual...
So, so, sure, so the EDC, their board would have to approve the bonds, but as far as like letting the contract and managing the contract and all those things, that'll be city staff.
Is that going to come back to here?
Yes, absolutely. I believe the bonds will come back here, the construction contract, the engineering.
I was going to say, all of the bid, the construction.
Everything will come back here.
It's over the $200,000 mark, still has to come back to here. That's why I said it'll be dual. Their board will be voting on it, council will be voting on it.
And, you know, we'll, we'll be, you know, we may have the design contract in front of you before we have all the details worked out with the RSA and the fees and things like that, but we'll have that worked out well in advance of going to construction.
I'm, I'm very appreciative the EDC board wants to do the cost sharing. I applaud them, thank you, Matt, thank you to the staff, thank you to the team over there. I'm just going to say it one more time, just so it's on the record, those folks are getting a sweetheart deal. Last year's projection on this was going to be 600 to 800,000 dollars a year in maintenance if this project went forward, because there's more acreage to cover, there's more mowing, there's more facility. I am not comfortable letting that contract, I just want to be really explicit, I want to say it out in the air, letting that contract until those RSAs are changed, and I hope that those folks that are on the other end of those RSAs hear us, and that message is communicated as clearly as possible. I'm happy to approve this, but I am not going to let a contract on any items until we have forward movement on that. I just want to be clear as day, I want to hear, I want the staff to hear me clearly, that's all.
So Darren, explain something to me. So this bond, Mayor, if I recall, was only passed, barely passed.
So the park bonds, so the park bonds between Hickory Slough and Independence, basically it's 51 and a half, 48 and a half, somewhere in that ballpark.
So are we still going to sell partial of those bonds to do Independence Park?
Yeah, so the two separate projects, EDC is taking up the project at Hickory Slough, and the reason is it really fits more in line with what the EDC can do. They can do parks straight out, but it also has, because of the increased size, the visibility for bigger tournaments and those types of things, that really fits in the wheelhouse of the EDC anyway.
So what happens to the Independence Park that we had included in this bond?
That's, that's still another, that's a separate project and would be separate anyway. Wouldn't even be considered as a part of this.
Okay, so the bond amount can be a lot less than 17, or whatever amount.
Yeah, so I think the, I think the bond program itself, Help Me Trent was 34, 34 and a half million. Both, both projects were very similar in cost, one was 16, one was 17, somewhere in that ballpark. So the Independence Park project is still yet to do, and I'll say this, I think offloading this, if you will, from the property taxpayers, having the EDC pick it up and do it, I think is a good faith measure with what that vote looked like. I mean, it was, it was close, it was tight, yes, it passed, yes, the voters said, go do them. Do we still move forward? We do, but I think we have to move forward in a very cautious fashion, and having that $17 million project moved and done through EDC funds and sources and their bonding capacity is a good faith measure. The other thing is, I think both Carrie and her staff, as well as city staff, are putting together, you know, kind of stakeholders in, in both parks to make sure that, again, 48 and a half percent of the people who voted, you know, voted no. So we need to make sure that we're walking through that very carefully with, with all of our citizens and what they're asking for and what they're looking for in those projects. And I agree with, with, with all of you. I mean, we've got these agreements, and they've been in place for a long time, and, and they do need to be revisited, they do need to be updated. We're spending now millions and millions and millions of dollars on these parks, and they've got to have a better, you know, better payback than what we've been having. So I, I didn't mean to steal your thunder there, Rishi. Yeah. I, I was just, that's what I was going to say, I just think this is a good way to do this. It does free up on the city side of things, both our debt service, as well as long-term on some of our maintenance and operation. And it's maintenance and operation, that 82% is a chunk of money every year that, that we can set aside, you know, in, in various ways that we would have been paying, but that coming back in to do that cost share. So I think this is a good, and then you couple that with the next item, item D, and I think it's a win for the taxpayers all the way around, it's a win for the EDC, it's a win, you know, for our cities and our, and our citizens. So Mayor Protem, you got a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to Matt from PDC, as well as Mona here, she's a member of the PDC board as well. Want to tell y'all thanks for both this item and the next one. Appreciate y'all working with us and, and finding a way to help out. I feel that it does move forward the city and does really nice things for us and the taxpayers at the same, same time. So thank you very much.
Last call, questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, Mr. Patel, if you'll present item D, please.
Yes, Mayor, considering possible action, resolution number R2023-179, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. So after a series of meetings with the city council and the EDC board over the past year, kind of in May, we reviewed a list of projects that are to be funded by the EDC. So this item tonight, the resolution here memorializes the PDC's commitment of 20% of their revenues to qualified infrastructure recapitalization projects for redevelopment and target areas, targeted areas of the city. The 20% is going to be calculated as a, as a five-year rolling average, so we recognize the cyclical nature of capital projects, but on average over the five years will be 20%. The focus areas are areas contained, contained in the State Highway 35 corridor redevelopment strategy, the Old Town area, and the Broadway corridor redevelopment plan. The projects that will meet the, you know, the criteria of projects are defined in the Texas Local Government Code. The Development Corporation portion of the code that defines infrastructure projects, so all the projects have to meet that definition to be included. And so the EDC has actually approved, already approved this similar resolution in June. And just to go through some of the projects that are, that are planned to be included, there's Old Town Drainage and Utilities, Industrial Drive West of 35, Nap Drive East of 35, Alice Street, Shank Road, and Woody Road are on the five-year plan right now. And then as we move forward, we'll continue to add projects to that, to that five-year plan, so that we've always got a rolling average of 20% of the EDC projects being funded here. So with that, hand it back to Mayor and Council for discussion or questions.
Sounds good. Both Mary Barry and Mr. Patel pulled this item consideration.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I wanted to thank Matt and their team for actually coming through on this project. I mean, it's a personal project of mine, but council and EDC worked together to make this happen. And once EDC got a hold of their guidelines or, or the goal, they've come in and exceeded the expectation of the 20%, I think they're at 25% of their, of their actual revenue. So thanks again, I appreciate it, and I really like the way that the projects were put together. I know you don't necessarily have them on a map here, but if you ever get a chance to look at them on a map, they're going to really connect that West of 35 Makawha area, and it's going to turn it into a potentially pretty sizable industrial corridor for the city of Pearland. So great job, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I do appreciate it. Sitting on the EDC board, I can tell you, you know, and sitting on the city council now, looking at the other side of this equation, I certainly think, you know, this will help the tax base to lower the tax rate. And my biggest fear, as we're going through this budget, is the tax rate that keeps increasing. And I think, just discussing this Saturday, you know, we're trying to keep our tax rate lower, affordable, affordability is questionable, becoming questionable, I should say, in our town. And so I appreciate EDC and their board members considering this 20%. And let's, you know, let's see what projects they do help, and hopefully we can put some more projects from the bond that have been approved and reduce the bond sales, and hopefully get EDC to, you know, start doing some of these bonds drainage projects. So thank you to the EDC for considering this and doing this.
Very good. I'd like to make this statement, I always want to give the folks who put it on the opportunity, but I want to commend both Member Barry and Member Kozza, who brought this initiative to the council. First up, October, November of last year, somewhere in that ballpark, we had a joint meeting, kind of talked through it with the EDC board. Then we had several subsequent meetings that resulted ultimately in what we have here. What I like about this is it's actually giving smaller projects the opportunity to get, to get done. A lot of these projects don't, sometimes don't rise to the level of a bond program or something of that nature, and they're a little bit smaller in nature, and the EDC can come in and kind of knock these out systematically. What I'll say, back to Member Barry's comment, I think we will see, over time, a tremendous amount of redevelopment in the areas that we do these projects over time, because the infrastructure is beefed up. The reason people won't do that redevelopment or invest those monies now is either the drainage is inadequate, or the water and sewer is inadequate, or the roadway is, you know, needing to be rebuilt. And so upon getting these things done, I think we will see that return in that way over time. It won't happen overnight, this is slow-moving, but you can look up 10 years from now and you'll see redevelopment in all these areas, just like we're seeing redevelopment in some of the areas that EDC has been doing already up and down 35, you're starting to see that movement. So I think it's an appropriate use, I think it's a good use of the absent sales tax with the economic development, and I can't wait to see how these just kind of come to fruition, and then over time, as we do more. So I want to commend both of you guys for bringing that forward. I always tell new council members, nothing happens overnight. There is a process, it's, it's meant to be a process, it protects you, but we can commit, we can get things done, and, and you've now seen that. So don't, don't hesitate to bring your ideas, just sometimes it might take a little bit. Appreciate you.
I think the word patience is in order. Here again, I'd like to say thanks to Matt, Mona, and the rest of the PDC team. It's really appreciated, so thank you very much.
Just want to, want to have like a love fest here, which is great. I want to really, really give a lot of credit to Jeff and Joe, they're real spark plugs on this issue. I give credit, the PDC, the council hadn't had a joint meeting, they couldn't, nobody could remember the last day that happened, and that, that has moved very, very quickly. When I first got to the council in 20, Mayor was on, and at the time Woody, and we were literally probably, I want to say dead in the water, but there was no forward movement on drainage. You talked to Robert Upton, we had no dollars really set aside for maintenance, now we've got a reasonable amount going every year, it's expanding, and we're taking this seriously. I know Raj, it's probably the happiest day of his professional life, he's getting all this money raining down on him, but, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of stuff now, and I think for the economic impact, I think we're going to get those dollars. The reality is, is the climate issues aren't going away, and people are going to make investments, whether they be homes or businesses and places that they feel safe. It's, it's, look at Florida, you can't even get insured in Florida now. And so for folks coming here, they're going to know that their infrastructure is getting to where it needs to get to, to be ready for the future. I'm really appreciative of the EDC, want to take this thing on and take our comments seriously, and I look forward to a really, really bright future on this issue. So thank you guys so much.
Member Carbone, anything? All right, last follow-up, seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Oh, yeah.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
It's known as lecture, yeses be yeses and nos be nos. Instead of ah. All right, moving forward in our agenda, other business, there is none. Mayor, council issues, city council, we have one, item number one, discussion regarding the city's tree mitigation requirements. With that, this is a discussion item, no, no, no voted item today, but I believe this was brought forward by Member Barry and Patel, so I will turn it over to them.
Thanks, Mayor. I just kind of wanted to start off by saying that, you know, this is not a knock on, on our development team, I think they do a fantastic job in, in what they do. They have a hard job, they have a lot of arrows being thrown at them on a daily basis, and I think they do a really good job of catching those arrows and doing something with them. Sometimes their hands are tied, but in many cases, they're able to come to a solution that, that everybody's comfortable with. But even before I got on council, this, the tree ordinance has been a problem, and I've never been in a position to actually do anything about it. You know, I've made comments here and there, and inquired this, that, and the other, but, you know, it, it's, it's really becoming prohibitive to some businesses from an expansion standpoint. And, and I don't know, I don't have any examples firsthand about whether or not it's prohibited businesses from developing in Pearland or coming to Pearland and, and building a vertical structure versus buying a structure at their current use that's, you know, that they're settling for. But there are a few things that I would really like to, I would really like to change in this ordinance, and, and I think, I think they, did y'all pull up the UDC section? Section 4.2.3.7? Thank you. So i-if you look at section item B1, and I'm just going to kind of bring you to the last sentence there, so a tree that is less than 20, 12 to 24 inches, you will be replaced with a, a number, a diameter, they measure these trees and diameters, and then they determine that you have to take the diameter, the exact diameter, and put it on the ground. A brand-new tree, a tree that might be three inches or six inches in diameter, so in this particular case, they're telling you that you have to replace that single tree with 200% or two trees, or that one particular tree that you needed to cut down, or either a business expansion, or a new development on a piece of property, or whether it be for maybe insurance purposes or something, they come by and they say, hey, we just did an inspection on your home or your business, and we're not going to offer you property insurance, because the tree is growing against your property, and you're going to need to cut that down. So those are things that businesses otherwise have no control over. You know, a business owner decides that they want to plant a tree, you know, hey, look, you know, our first tree, we bought our building, we're moving into it, brand-new business in Pearland. Well, 20 years from now, it's, you know, it's, it's buckling the sidewalk or buckling the driveway, and they have to cut it down just for those particular reasons. Next thing you know, they have to go and plant two trees, or in some cases, four trees for the, in this particular case. So I guess my point is, is the tree ordinance is egregious, and it's anti-business, if you ask me. You know, I'm here, I'm a business owner in Pearland, and I, I particularly really care about the fact that I, I want our trees, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish our hammock, but I would ask that, the one ask that I have when it comes to that is, rather than using the diameter of the tree, can we not use the anticipated hammock at maturity versus, and you know, every horticultural hat, every horticulture person has it, because I can go and buy a tree at Lowe's today, and on the little tag, it says, this tree's going to be 25 feet tall and 40 feet wide, or whatever it is. So the anticipated hammock associated with that, because if I have to plant four trees to replace one, next thing you know, as a business owner or a landowner, I have to turn around and go and cut down two of those trees later on, at which, at which point I'm going to get penalized, because now I'm overcrowding, I need to trim up my canopy and so on and so forth. So I think that, you know, the, I think the premise of, of this ordinance is, is in the right place. I think that the, the implementation or the penalizing aspect of this ordinance is in the wrong place. So if I cut down a tree, that's going to be 24 inches with a, or say a 24, a 24-foot hammock or a canopy on a tree, and I plant it with an exact same tree that in its adult life is going to also have a 24-foot wide, you know, canopy, I would assume that that would be good, right, as a replacement. But in this particular case, no, the city wants 48 feet of hammock, canopy. And if you go to item B2, it's, it gets a little bit bigger, it's a 300. It's a 300%. If you go to the la, the next page please, it's a 300%. So now you have three of those trees. And then you get to item three, it becomes four of these trees. And so it becomes increasingly penalized, more penalizing because we love our trees, right? We want our trees. I want to cut, I don't want to cut down the 100 year old oak tree. But at the end of the day, if it's preventing my business from expanding, then that oak tree's gone. And as a city, I'm going to say, okay, well, you're going to cut down a 100 year old oak tree? Great. Go plant another tree that can grow to 100 years old exactly. You're going to have a live oak tree? Go plant a live oak tree somewhere on your property. Replace it, but be it on that property, right? There's also a section in here, if you look at the items, is it, it's B or item C. There's a trust fund. Okay? So if you start taking a look at this trust fund, now remember, we have, you know, large, smaller tree, you have to put two of them up there. Let's assume you have a large tree with a large diameter trunk. That is, let's just pick 30 inches, for example, right? In that particular case, you'd have to put three of those 30 inch tree, or three trees out there, three six inch trees or whatever it is, they're going to equal 30 inches in diameter, right? And double that. So if you have six inch trees that you put on the ground and you have a 30 inch tree, now you got to plant 10 trees, right? On a piece of property that you couldn't otherwise put 10 trees on to begin with. So, and I'm looking at you guys because y'all are in development. Sorry about that. But, you know, so my point, my point is, is if you can't put 10 trees on the piece of property, you're, the UDC is so gracious enough to give us a $2, $200 per inch fine to be spent elsewhere. The other thing I would like to see is that fine maxed out at 2,500 bucks. So right now that's an infinite number. And if you don't have necessarily enough space to put it on, and by the way, you don't necessarily have to put the tree on your property. You can put it somewhere else. But at the end of the day, you have to maintain that tree. So, and they even tell you how to maintain it, you know? And so, look, I'm not opposed to trees. I love trees. I've got a lot of trees on my property. No, but I, I just need to have a conversation with all the people on this council to say, what can we change to make it easier to do business in Pearland? I think that this, this is directly associated with the ease of doing business in Pearland. Because the last thing, okay, I didn't even print out the whole thing. I started at section four dot two dot three dot two and I just stopped printing. This is all about trees, okay? I stopped on, on, you know, 11 pages. This is only on how you develop and maintain a tree plan, how you water the trees during construction, what trees you can use. I mean, look, when you're trying to build a building in Pearland, we all agree it's very expensive. The last thing I want to deal with is a bunch of trees, okay? So, I mean, you might think it's funny, but as a, as someone developing mayor, you, you're in this business, Member Kamkar, you're in this business. You probably have spent a lot of money when it comes to developing property for trees, right? So that's all I really have to say about it. I would like to see, I would like to see the tree ordinance changed to a one for one tree. If you cut down a live oak, plant a live oak. If you cut down an ash, plant an ash. I'd like to see the penalty, if you can't plant an ash or a live oak tree, if that's too much to ask, if there is such a penalty, I would like that penalty capped at $2,500 because I've heard of instances where these penalties are tens and tens of thousands of dollars, which as a business owner, that could, that could make or break the deal. So I know the intent of this, this section of the UDC was not to make or break a building or a property deal for a business owner or a developer or anybody coming into the city of Pearland. But at the end of the day, it's a sizable amount of money. And we need to really reconsider the tree ordinance.
So appreciate the comments. Thank you. I think before we get into any additional kind of discussion, or I think if we could maybe have our community development folks weigh in about just kind of holistically looking at, because there are tree mitigation credits and tree credits and things like that that go along with it. Just so we're all talking with full knowledge of the, of the interaction of the rules that you've gone through with, with the rest of that part of the UDC. So maybe John, I don't know if it's you or who, who would you have speak to that?
First off, I just say that in my six years here, there has not been one proposed expansion of a local business that did not go through because of trees. I would say we deal more with fences being built too high, with detention requirements, with impact fees, with electrical panels being problems to development and trees are, right? When it's 100 degrees every day for 30 days, I think we're glad that we have trees and the shade and the cooling they provide. The, four years ago, we were before you, we brought forward amendments to the UDC code for trees that added credits, additional credits. So that if you planted larger trees, you got an expanded credit. If you took landscaping trees or street trees, which were a different requirement and planted larger more, you got credit against those as well. And there, there probably are additional credits that we can look at and we've talked about with our staff that may be beneficial to existing businesses and their limits on, on property. The diseased trees do not count against the UDC requirements, mitigation requirements. If your tree is diseased, you can take it down or our urban forester is fine with that. Residential trees, the owner of a residential property has the right to take the trees down as he wants. We have no control over that. So from our standpoint, this has been a very beneficial ordinance to the city, to development, to the look and feel of Pearland. Yes, there are, you can look at old pictures of Pearland. There are more trees in Pearland today than there were 30, 40, 50 years ago. And I think that's a good thing. I think that makes Pearland part of what Pearland is today. And I would say that this is exactly part of why we've asked for a UDC rewrite, right? I mean, when we thought the UDC was going to be amended last year, we stopped bringing amendments forward because we wanted to put them together in one package. We were just about to start working on those again, when it came up again that the UDC would hopefully go forward. It was a question this past weekend is, do business owners, developers really want to see a bunch of changes? I think they want to see the changes at one time than the way we've been doing it, which is every three or four months, we change four or five parts of the code. And three or four months later, we change another three or four parts of the code. They want it done at one time and do that. So I would recommend that any requests to look at the tree ordinance being included in the rewrite of the UDC and the review of the UDC. And that it be done holistically and at one time. And that way you get the view of the community involved and the committee that is proposed to be a part of that process to bring forward a new document that could include additional tree credits and allowances for development in older areas of town.
Thanks, John. I really don't think that it needs to be that complicated. You know, and once this committee is established, whatever it is, I would hope that you have more small businesses on there. And I'm talking about small businesses that have less than 50 people. Then we have larger businesses in the Pear, in the Pearland area and developers. Because remember, developers get reimbursed through MUDs, right? So they're not necessarily.
Not for tree mitigation.
Well, okay, well, whatever.
Factually accurate. It's not correct.
All right, easy. So the thing is, is, you know, I would prefer to see small business on those, on those committees versus large business because larger businesses tend to have people that can manage the UDC or look into these items forward. But a small business owner like me, I don't have time to, to deal with the UDC and go figure out what my tree mitigation is going to be and so on and so forth. And it just gets dropped on me at the last minute by some inspector that comes to the, that comes to the job site.
And I would say, no, it doesn't. Because that went over, if, to the pre-development, the consultation, we have so many avenues to go over that. And your permit wouldn't have been issued if you didn't address your tree requirements. But as we, we had a UDC committee previous that came up with this recommendation and, and they had numerous small business owners as well. So I think definitely you need a mix and the, and the local small business needs to be represented on that, that committee. Moving forward.
Yes, a question.
Yeah, Member Cade.
Were you going to?
No, go ahead.
When I was on Parks Board a long time ago, I, I remember we had monetary valuation on some of the older, larger trees in Pearland. Is that right? So for example, this business that's coming in on the corner that cut down half the trees in Pearland, are they, what is their tree mitigation going to look like?
They paid approximately $200,000 to the city's tree trust fund.
So they don't have to plant one tree?
They'll, they'll plant parking lot trees. They'll have street trees. But again, this is their choice, right? I mean, they, they have the choice. It's just like, the pro, I'll tell you the problem we see with the, with the tree mitigation is a business owner and his team will submit a tree mitigation plan, which says, we understand we're cutting down these trees and here's how we propose to meet the requirements. And the city will approve that plan and then they go out there and they ignore that plan. They plant what they want to plant, where they want to plant it. And then it's somehow the city's fault that they can't or won't meet the plan, right? So you had your opportunity to meet with the city. You had your opportunity to have your plan approved and you chose to do that. And then you chose to reject what you yourself submitted to the city for approval. That's the issue we have, right? Don't submit a plan that you don't plan on meeting. If you have a problem with, if you want to do something else, then come to us and talk to us. We work with, with the business owner on the smallest property to the largest developer and landowner. And we have solved so many problems with people who have had three or four or $500,000 mitigation fees by coming up with solutions for them, right? Because we want those projects to go forward. I tell Jerry all the time, don't make trees be a problem that stops a business from coming to Pearland. And they're not. The only, there's one property that has stopped, a tree has stopped development. And that's the property, I believe it's next to Pearland State Bake on Main Street. There's a 48, 50 inch oak on that tree. And nobody wants to cut that down because you can't develop that property with that tree. But under your proposal, you would take that 50 inch, 50 inch historical oak and you'd replace it with one, one oak.
You're not doing that, Jeff. And, and. You can't do that. Jerry, so the financial, the financial, the monetary value attributed to the trees is more for insurance purposes, like if a car wrecks into one of our trees or something like that, it's to, all right. Thank you. That's what, okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like to do a little information gathering before I start firing off hot comments, which I heard a lot of good ones so far. When was the tree ordinance adopted, either via the UDC or separate ordinance?
It was adopted in 1997.
97?
Yeah. 1997.
We're close to almost 30 years ago.
I was on the, I was on the council the past.
So you're there. You, you were the guy.
And I'm going to give some historical.
Yes, sir. Okay. So that's 97. Has this been amended since then?
A number of times.
So it's two, three times. Okay.
The most recent amendments that gave all the different credits and things like that.
The credits came in, uh, in 2019.
Okay, so it's an evolving item.
Yes, I mean, we've, obviously, you know, situations change and we see how things go and we try to respond to them. But, but our goal has always been to keep the intent of the tree ordinance in place. And, and like I said to Councilmember Barry, I understand the concerns and I think there are some, some allowances that could be added to the code to better protect small businesses or pre-developed lots who may have more limitations on their property. But I think, you know, and that's something staff can, can work with the UDC committee moving forward to, to make recommendations and bring forward to you.
Great. And then in your professional time, and I, I've asked for the privilege, I apologize. I just, I'm going to ask a lot of questions here. I want to get as much data out there. In your six years, you said you have not had one quote unquote development or deal killed.
We haven't had an expansion killed for trees, right? The only, again, the only, the only proposed development that I can think of that did not happen because of a tree is one on that property next to Pearland State Bake because the tree was too big and that was, would have caused.
Let me ask you, in the six years you've been here, how many items that would possibly get killed by a tree ordinance? Are we talking in the hundreds, the thousands?
We're tens of thousands.
And so one out of, let's say, just say 10,000.
Yes.
Just for the sake of this discussion.
People meet, the, small businesses, large businesses, residential development, commercial development, industrial development.
And then we, we own staff have an urban forester now because in theory, at some point, whether in the recent past or near past or further back in line, thought trees were important. Is that, is that factually accurate?
Correct. And we, we have an urban forester and we have a development inspector that works with the urban forester to go out and, and help. They go out in the field. They help count the trees. They help people and developers and builders understand what they're looking at. Jerry has looked at, at tree plants that have come in and told them, your, your guy that you hired and paid thousands of dollars to has done it wrong. And he's telling you, you owe too much money. You need to go back out there and have them do it right.
He's helping get things right as opposed to getting in the way. That's how you would characterize it? He's trying to get things right as opposed to?
Yes, we're trying to get, we, we, we only want you to do what you're responsible for, not more.
Let me ask a question, Darren. When we're doing developments, and obviously there, we're not doing as many developments because we're near buildout. Has a tree ordinance or tree fee or tree, anything ever killed one of those developments that we actually did with third party developers that had an agreement?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right. I just want to leave those facts out there that this all of a sudden raging problem doesn't seem to be a raging problem, at least.
That you don't know of. I mean, how do they know that the, the tree didn't kill the deal or the 20, the $200,000 this guy on the corner had to spend for trees?
I hear you. I just.
In the trust fund.
It's just one out of 10,000. So the one thing I, the other thing I'd like to say is, one of our members, Mr. Hernandez, works with KPB and they do a tree giveaway. So apparently people think these are important. Now, are they the most important thing above all things? I don't, don't think so. But I would tell you, we are in the business of solving problems that are front and center. And this doesn't appear to be a front and center problem. The one thing I would tell you, now I'm going to go to my professional experience. I don't do work in the city of Pearland. I've not done work, will not be doing work. Do work in Conroe though. Conroe has a fairly aggressive tree ordinance. We had a 45 acre site and we cleared it. And they have a 30% requirement and then they wanted a turn lane. And so they wanted the turn lane and so we gave them the turn lane. And then I all of a sudden had 26% coverage as opposed to 30% coverage. No good deed goes unpunished. And so my tree, my tree consultant for Conroe, who happened to write the ordinance and now is the consultant, then dutifully let us know that we were not compliant. These are 200 homes and they are going to be housing for teachers, for moms, dads, sheriff. I mean, these are not, you know, $5 million homes or even $500,000 homes. But what I would tell you is we got into compliance. We worked with the city. It was probably more painful at some points. Guess what? Our tree study was in compliance. They told us what we needed to do. And there's a beautiful strip of 35, 40 foot lob lolly pines in our community. And it is adding value as opposed to taking away. And I would just tell you, I, I think, can any of these things be improved? 100%. There, there's no place where we can't. But the way that it is being portrayed was that this is a thing stopping all good things in Pearland. And I just fundamentally don't believe that. The reality is it is getting warmer. I don't care wherever you are on, on, if you're a scientist or not, those trees add value. They, they help cool, there's a reason why our parks have trees in them. And there's a reason on the residential side, when we do have to clear a site, we do two or three street trees. And we hope that they get to those ones that are worthy of being cut down 25 years from now. But the reality is, is they're important. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of shocked. I had not heard that we had this tree epidemic that is ruining the city. The one thing I would say, I, I heard some, some comments earlier that muds, developers in muds get trees. That's just not true. Even in park and wrecks, I don't believe that we're allowed to reimburse for those fees. If anything, with a mud that has park bonds, we want more trees than less. We want more plantings. And, and I, I just, the thing that I struggle with and it really disappoints me. And, and I, I just, the thing that I struggle with, and it really disappoints me, Member Barry, is we talk about we want to be pro-business, and we want to make things happen and not get in the way. If we want to go be pro-business, there's about 10 other things that we can do before we would get to this item. We could have not increased the utility fees, we could not have increased impact fees. Those are all votes that members on this made. They can go point, uh, the plat fees that we just went out there. There was a certain group that, as soon as they saw our new plat fee, wanted to fight us on it. If we want to be pro-business, don't start with the trees. Start somewhere else. It's not the trees, brother.
Hey, so, so let me correct you.
Let me, let me just finish, I'm gonna close up here, and then I'll, I'll take the comment. The, the point I just want to make is this. This is an important topic, it clearly is something that is on Member Barry's minds, and I have an immense amount of respect, I just kudos him at least three times tonight. But I would say, we are working so hard to greenify this area, we are on a flat coastal plain. We can't change that, the only thing we can change, we're not the Big Thicket. The only thing we can do is, is where we can decorate, where we can accentuate, those trees add value. We need to work together on this issue. I'm, I, I'm against regulation generally, but throwing this in the trash is not the answer.
I'm not saying throw it in the trash, nor did I say get rid of all the trees. What I said was, I don't think they were trying to create a city full of tree trunks. I think we're trying to maintain our current hammock in the city of Pearland. And I think that's the intent overall of, of the UDC code in and of itself. Now, that being said, we base the number of trees that we have to plant or replace based on the diameter of the trunk. Well, in that particular case, we have that, but we have to multiply it times two, or three, or four times, given the size of the tree. So, why do we have to plant four trees for one? Why can't we plant a liking-kind tree that at maturity is gonna be the same-sized tree that it was with the one that you cut down? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying cut down all the trees. I'm just saying, make the ordinance a little bit more common sense, instead of egregious. So, okay, that's fine. If you want to plant a tree, knock yourself out, I'm happy to do it, I have a lot of trees. Right, I love trees.
I would just add that I think, I mean, I think the, I don't think the ordinance, the intention of the ordinance is to maintain the tree canopy. I think it's clearly the intent of our ordinance to expand our canopy, that it's clearly, was clearly the desire of council, that we want more trees, we want more shade, throughout our city. Since 2011, we have been awarded Tree City USA for recognition of our tree programs, our ordinance, our outreach as a city. And I think that, uh, that's an important aspect that we've done. Like, like I said before, I, I can agree that there are, um, a certain percentage of, of smaller, older properties, that yes, a willingness, a desire to expand their business may, may be hampered by the existing tree ordinance. I think there is room or recommendations to allow additional credits in certain areas. I think if you go into a greenfield and you wipe out the trees, mitigate, right? Uh, I think that's, that's a different situation. I think if, if you go into Old Town and you're trying to do something, then maybe, maybe it's not two-to-one, maybe it's one-to-one, or maybe there's a different way to look at it. But, um, I think there are solutions that staff can work with, the committee, uh, if, if it's approved, if this item's approved in the budget in the next year, and come forward to the council with a fully-realized, uh, amended UDC that takes this into consideration.
I think my comments are really just rooted in the fact that, you know, one of my goals is to be, is to be, uh, easy to do business, you know, have Pearland to be easy to do business with.
And I would say we agree with that. Our goal of community development is to make business happen.
So, let me, um, let me give a little historical. It's been, I mean, since 97, when we approved the first, uh, tree mitigation ordinance, tree preservation ordinance, uh, I've slept a few times since then, and I don't have it in front of me. But I was on a council that, that put that ordinance together, uh, so I kind of know a little bit about intent, and I know a little bit about the early, uh, stages of that. Also know what prompted it. What prompted it, uh, quite frankly, behind Valero on Orange and, and Main, were, I forget how many, but oaks that were about this big, got cut down, as a result of that, of that station going in there. And that's what prompted kind of the outcry, that we need to do something about preserving, uh, some of our trees. At the same time, I, I remember making the statement, and, and, and in that process, that there is a fine line between who owns those trees. Property owner does. Community, the city, uh, the neighbor, they don't own those trees. Property owner does. And, and so, we sat out and wanted to have an ordinance that promoted preservation, promoted mitigation if certain trees came down, and promoted increasing the canopy over time. All, as much as we can, try to do that under a property rights environment. What's the right thing to do, what's the right way to, to, to be about it? Now, one of the things in the early, early stages of that ordinance was you got, and I'm glad to see some of these credits coming back, because early in the ordinance, you got some of your credits, some of your mitigation, if you took something down, you got credit in your landscape plan for that. That got wiped out somewhere along the way, where it had to be above and beyond your landscape plan. So having some of this mitigation, and some of the credits come back in, to take, to take that in, was a good thing. And again, we, we, we said, yeah, if you took down a, a 24-inch oak tree, you replaced it with, I can't remember the, the number, six 4-inch trees. We ended up with, with six trees over time, that today are probably all 24-inch trees. So we ended up increasing the canopy. So that was some of the stated goals, but we wanted to work, and we had a fee in there, because quite frankly, there are certain properties, you're just never going to be able to mitigate it, just not. And, uh, at the time, the fees were, uh, even to a point, if it became too onerous, they, it was a negotiable point. Uh, I will state, here recently, uh, since I've been, uh, in this position, we've negotiated with the developers of Massey Oaks. They had those, that beautiful row of, of, of trees coming in. They're all about between 24 and 36 inches, and bigger, uh, up and down that, that line. And because of our design criteria, and roadways, and everything else, it was gonna cause those trees really to go, go away. But we worked with them to make sure that they could maintain that, and that was a developer working with us to maintain trees that literally took 40 years to, to, to grow, you know, into the way they are. So, I, I think, within community development, within, uh, Jerry and his team, you know, we have a spirit of wanting to work with people. To John's point, yeah, if you're gonna put something on paper and get it approved, build it. Build it according to the plans. Things happen, things happen out in the field, you make modifications. You make modifications, but the city knows those modifications. But if you're gonna say you're gonna plant 4-inch oaks, or 6-inch oaks, or 3-inch oaks, don't put in twigs, don't put in a 2-inch oak. And, and I, I don't know how often that happens, I don't know how much that, that, that goes on there. But I, I think we have a spirit of working with people, not against them. At the same time, we have room for improvement? Absolutely. Everybody up here has room for improvement, everybody in our staff has room for improvement. And I think sometimes we have to educate our public, just like the, uh, the lot next door. Yeah, 16 acres was wooded, and I bet you, Jerry could probably, probably go pull the treatment, uh, the, uh, the tree plan. I bet you, over 60% of the trees that were pulled out of that, that, that tract were not even protected trees. So, we're, we're not saying you can't take a tree down. And most of the trees that people, they, they get, they get, you know, worried about, trees coming down, are, are not protected anyway. Uh, having done a, a, a project recently, vast majority of the trees on that project were, were dying or dead due to the, due to the freeze. I mean, they were just in rough shape. And, and to their point, it's diseased, it's dying, there, there's no requirement to mitigate. There's a credit for that. So, uh, so I, I think there's, I think there's a way, and if, if we need to tweak it, but more importantly, I think maybe we need some education over it. You're one for one, I, I, I'm open for any kind of thing, and I'm open to hear what John and his team might, might have to say, is some, some additional tweaks to it. Like anything else, we want to be business-friendly. But, and I think Member Cam Car would concur with me, you, if, if you've got mature trees that you can use day one, you're gonna do everything you can to keep them. Because that's gonna add to your overall value upfront. So as a developer, we're gonna do that. I also know, not every tract of land is equal. And sometimes, right in the middle of where you have to, you know, put a parking structure, or, or your, uh, or your building, you know, there lies the big oak. And so you gotta, you gotta do something with it. But, um, but I think we've got a good, uh, team at the city that works through some of these. Not everything is perfect. I think they work with owners, uh, when something's not right, to, to mitigate the stuff. But I will say this, to the, to the staff, know, a lot of times, um, uh, I, I think a lot of times, and Member Cam Car will, will know this, things that come up, especially trees, and those types of cost, and not always covered by your loan, not always covered by your development loan. And they're unexpected. And so typically, when we get called, it's because it's coming out of somebody's pocket, not, you know, they can't take it to the bank loan, and they're gonna be able to offload that, and, and they've already got their equity and everything else out the door, and they're trying to figure out how to come up with a big number. Now, it's also good to know, you know, John and his group, you sit down, and you're gonna work with those folks to get through, you know, a $200,000 number down to 150, or 150 down to 200, or 100, or something of that nature. So, uh, that's what I'm encouraged by, is that we have a spirit of cooperation and working. But I want to make sure what we have is a recognition that the trees actually belong and are owned by the owner of the property. And we've gotta work through, how do we want to preserve, and what do we preserve?
Yeah, good, very good point, Mayor. Um, and, and let me just clarify, again, for the record, I'm not against trees. And, and I do acknowledge that John and his team, those guys do a great job, uh, in community development. That is not at all what my point was. The intent is to, number one, make it easier for business owners to understand the need for these trees, and to acknowledge and appreciate the fact that they may have to come out of pocket for X. But the, I, I personally feel if you have to plant two, three, or four X times the trees that you've cut down, and, you know, increase your hammock 10 X over time, it doesn't sit well with me. Right, so, uh, maybe some, at some point, somebody can convince me of that. And I think, uh, I think Dr. Shuffler's here today, didn't you just work on this? You've gone through this process with community development and, and those guys.
Yeah, I apologize for being late, I'm Chris Shuffler, 2126 Roy Road, Pearland. Will you fill out a card?
Please fill out a card, because I didn't call on you because you didn't fill out a card.
I know, I got here and they were gone, they weren't on the table.
Well, as a member of board, you know that, so.
I do, I do, I apologize, I'm a bad human, I'll take my lashes here in a minute. I do, I have a project that I'm working on right now, and actually too, I'm trying to build a house as well. And I'll start, I'll say the exact same thing that I think everybody up there has said, that, that development team does a great job trying to work with people. They have a certain rubric they have to work within. I don't think it's the people that are broken, I, I do think that there's some problems in the system. Jerry, uh, Jerry was great, came out several times, worked with us. And I am one of those frustrating people that got plans approved, and then realized what we submitted, and got approved, and realized it's not, it's not feasible. You know, architect draws something, puts it on paper, how many people have gone through a process where an architect drew something, and you went to implement it, and you're like, uh-uh, this doesn't work? And sadly, that caught me by surprise, so I apologize about that, this is kind of a new rodeo for me. So, just please, guys, accept my apology, just as, as, as I look tender at here. I, I wanted to, I wanted to agree and disagree a little bit with some of the comments that have been made. And Mayor, you started to touch on it, there was a comment that kept being said, there was a phrase, "Our trees." They're not our trees, they're my trees, okay? Or they're your trees. If they're on your property, you paid to plant them, you purchased them when you bought the property, they were figured into the price of it, you have to maintain them, you treat them when they're sick. They add value, it's not something that you, as an owner, want to see diminished. But for a community to say, "These are our trees," well, what is that community contributing to taking care of those trees, or to providing those trees? You know, KPB does do a tree giveaway every year, and I applaud them for it, I love trees. In fact, I got 10 acres that I grew up on, that I'm looking at turning into an orchard whenever all is said and done. I'd love to just, you know, have a, a community garden, let people come through and pick stuff, and invite my staff to come out and fill their baskets with whatever's growing. But whenever it comes to, to these trees, there's a real cost. And so to disagree with, with Member Cam Car, um, it, it's a heavy cost. For instance, a 32-inch tree would be considered a heritage tree. And the math on that, the way this works out, you would have to replace that tree with 96 inches of trees planted. 96 inches of trees, you're talking about 16 6-inch trees. Those are the trees that you see planted with the big wedge digger trucks that take out a chunk of dirt and then drop a whole mature tree in the ground. That's about a $2,000 planting. That's $32,000 worth of trees being dropped onto a property. Now, the remediation fee at $200 an inch for that, well, you know, you've been blessed, you can save some money and just give the city a check for $20,000 instead to remediate those inches, if you don't have the room to plant them. Now, if you're on an old property, like my business happens to be on, where Bobby Stevener, I, I've heard people refer to him, and I'm not joking, I did not make this, this up, as the original urban forester for Pearland, Texas. The man went around dropping trees out of his rear end all over this town, I don't know how. He had a 500-acre ranch, he loved oak trees, and he would grab saplings and little, and little seeds that had sprouted up, little acorns that had started, and he'd just plant them everywhere. So the trees on our property that we're having to cut down were planted by a guy I consider my second dad, who invited me to buy the practice. I bought it in the real estate, and then whenever that tree has to come down, because we lost our front parking lot to Tex Dot, and then we're trying to do an expansion, and there's parking requirements for that, as well as detention, and the city was gracious enough to let us use the space for both. You know, we've got the TruGrid system that the city's allowing to account for detention and parking, which I think is great. But we have to put that somewhere, and a tree has to come down. And so you just added 32,000, or at least $20,000 to the cost of that project, just for one tree that I didn't want to see cut down, that tree's been there since before I was born. And I took that tree to a sawmill, because I did not let the crew throw it in the dumpster. They wanted to chop it up and just pitch it in the, in the waste, and I was like, "No, sir. That thing is amazing, it's gotta be turned into something amazing." So I took a trailer, hauled it to a sawmill, the total value of that tree and the lumber that came out of it is $10,000 to $12,000. The city's gonna charge me $20,000 just for the right to cut it down. The value of the lumber that comes out of it, the slabs, which the sawmill operator looked at and said, "This is gonna be amazing, this is gonna be beautiful wood, I'm glad you brought this." $12,000. Mr. Coker can probably tell you that a legal taking, in government standards, is at 25% of value, I believe, isn't it?
Not in all cases, no.
Not in all cases? So it, it just struck me as curious, that a tree that, the actual commodity, has a certain value. And I get what you're saying, we want, we want Pearland to be covered in trees, okay, great. Let's plant them under every power line, because that's, that's one thing we seem to do real well. Let's plant them in every median and at every intersection, so you can't see around the corner 500 feet you're supposed to be able to see down the road. I think that, there's some things that make sense, and some things that don't. And I'm, and I'm speaking a little tongue-in-cheek, I do love trees, I'd love to see more of them. But to say to a private landowner, you're a taxpayer, and you pay taxes not only as a landowner, but also as a business owner. You pay valuable personal property taxes, business personal property taxes, you pay real estate taxes, you pay taxes on payroll, you pay taxes that people don't even know exist, if they don't own a business. And then you're gonna say to that person, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna extract another excess tax from you because you had to take down something that you love in your own tree, and it's an excess value taken from a single taxpayer for the good of the community." So what I would encourage you to do, and I'm happy to work with, if there's a committee that's formed or anything, having gone through this process, you know, the comments I gave me on my own, I'll, I'll wrap up. On my own homestead property, with the tree planting for the frontage requirements that they were telling me I had to plant and all that, and I said, "If you make me plant those, I will literally, out of spite, the next day, cut them down, as soon as this deal closes." Just because I don't think that you should have the right to take excess value from a single taxpayer. What I would encourage you to look at, is instead of a penalty for cutting down trees, look for an incentive. I have over a dozen other oak trees on that same property, and I know y'all keep talking about credits. None of those oak trees count for anything. And I know y'all keep talking about credits. None of those oak trees count for anything outside of the landscaping. Now landscaping, they count. But when it comes to tree mitigation on those 96 inches for cutting down one tree. The existing other trees that prohibit me from planting. I can't plant another oak tree in the shadow of an oak tree or whatever else. It's not going to do well. It's not going to look good. But those other oak trees that I saved, don't help me. Now, if you looked at my property and you said, you've got this many total inches of trees and we'll incentivize you with a tax incentive or an offset or whatever. If you preserve that same number of inches of trees, we'll give you X. Or a certain percentage of those number of inches of trees, we'll give you X, we'll do an abatement, we'll do whatever. I don't know what it is. But instead of using the stick, use the carrot. And then you have incentivized a private landowner and a property owner in the right way to preserve what you think you want. Which is something that is valuable. When I see something that's valuable that I want, you know what I do? I pay for it. So that's all I would encourage you to do is look at doing it a different way.
Thank you, Dr. Shuffler. Good comments. And I appreciate you being here tonight and sharing those with us. Uh, follow up comments, wrap up comments? What's the next steps?
Alright. Really like to see this brought up in a form of an ordinance amendment, so.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I think we heard both extremes. I, I think we do need to have this as a bullet point as we work through the, the U D C changes. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think, uh. Councilman Barry's extreme side is, is where we end up. But I do think, I do think.
You can't get it if you don't ask for it, Tony. I'm asking for whatever I want and it's somewhere in the middle, right?
Doesn't hurt to ask. And yeah, it, they're, they're, the right answer is somewhere in the middle. And I, I look forward to, uh, working with staff and other community business owners and partners to, to find that right medium.
Could we be sure to hear from Jerry about the value trees have on the city?
Sure. I mean, we've, we, I think we know that. It's one of the reasons.
Well, but there's really things we haven't mentioned.
Right.
Storm, I mean, storm water mitigation. There's a lot of things we haven't mentioned. That trees do bring value to the city that we haven't brought up. Long list of things. So I just, maybe if we're going to discuss it later, if Jerry can be involved or thinks.
I mean, that's all part of this, right? Any other questions, comments?
Just a real quick question. It's more specific and I don't want to go down a wormhole. But this plan. Sounds like there was an architect involved. Did community development or anybody, the foresters see anything associated with this or is this completely after the fact?
What was approved?
You, you talking about the approved plans?
I'm just saying, I heard an architect was involved in sealed plans and I'm just curious, if there's an architect involved, do they have to come back here on anything?
So during the normal permit review, uh, there is an opportunity for the architect to make corrections. Uh, and to resubmit a set of plans to let us know when there's been a change to, uh, conditions on the site.
You have any knowledge if that happened in this instance that was brought up? Yeah, I know I'm asking a broad question, but we know if that happened?
After, after Jerry visited the site and it was determined that the, what was planned on the ground did not meet the approved mitigation plan. Uh, then he worked with the contractor and the property owner to bring the site into compliance.
Alright, I just want to clarify on that. Alright, and I, I agree with number K. I'd like to have more robust discussion on this.
Sounds like we'll have a more formal, um, uh, as far as next steps, I, and I, I agree. Uh, with, with, I think the appropriate places in a U D C rewrite, as we walk through that, we, we, we look at what changes and what. Uh, how to, how to, how to work with this. Uh, so I would, I would say that'd be the time to do that. Uh, the best time to do that. But I think in the meantime, even the testimony tonight is we, we've got a staff that's going to work with people through the process. It's not perfect. And whatever we come up with, I'll, I'll say it, it won't be perfect. Uh, there'll be, there'll be tweaks done to it. So. Uh, but I appreciate the, uh, I appreciate the, the discussion. Uh, as always, we want to, you know, do the right thing. And it's not always easy to land on it. But I think along the way, we've got to educate people on what exactly goes through the process. So. Uh, with that, we're going to move to adjournment at 9:19.